Welcome to the Shell Regional School Committee, January 4th, 2017. Committee meeting. Tonight, we have just two items on the agenda. And I'll give you a quick background on it. The two items are the forensic audit report out that the district has undertaken and also a discussion of some of the items in the report. I'm gonna, if you give me, just humor me, I'm gonna read through just a couple of dates to figure out how did we get to this point? So, because we've all been involved in looking at finances for a while now and had several questions. I'd like to first introduce some of our guests tonight. John Sullivan from Melanson Heath is the gentleman right here who conducted the audit. I'll talk a little bit more about John in a moment. And Nan O'Neil and Carrie Janess are our district attorneys, not the district attorneys, but our district's attorneys. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. Nan and Carrie will be handling the second agenda item while John does obviously the first with the report out. So, how did we get here to this night? Oh, gosh, I guess it was back in November of 2015. Several of the school committee members went to the Mass Association of School Committees' annual conference, which is a joint conference with the Mass Association of Superintendents, blah, blah, blahs. So, at that meeting, there was a breakout session of the Mass Association of School Business Officers, and several folks went to that meeting. I didn't attend that, that particular breakout. And they just had some conversation and some questions, brought those questions back to the school committee, and then in January of 2016, so it's been a full year, the school committee voted to engage MASBO, that's the acronym. And I want to make sure that I give you the specifics of what we asked MASBO to do. The real focus was, are we using best business practices? Are we, and there were questions in revolving in student accounts that we weren't sure of. And the bottom line was, we were trying to acknowledge the strengths, the weaknesses of our current practices, where we needed to make changes in order to achieve best practices. Because the school committee, one of the most critical functions of the school committee is that of fiduciary responsibility. So, we have a $54 million budget that serves the students and the staff of three towns. It's our responsibility, and it is a heady lofty responsibility to ensure that the money that the taxpayers provide is being used in a way that can help move the education forward. So, once we engaged MASBO, they did all their interviews, and then they came back in April with their report. And the results of the report were good, but we still had some unanswered questions. So, those particular areas were in special ed facilities and still questions on revolving accounts and student activity funds. Okay, so now, we fast forward to, what are we gonna do now that we still have questions? And then the discussion came to, well, if we still have questions, we need to find the answers to those questions, because we were getting ready to hire a brand-new superintendent. It's important that a new superintendent have an understanding of what their resources are, where the levers are that she or he can pull, and in our situation, it's obviously superintendent clenching. And if we can't help her understand that, or if our finance team can't help her understand that, then her opportunity for success is gonna be minimized. We don't want that when we're hiring a new superintendent. It's not uncommon, in fact, it's common for school districts to go through a forensic audit, once a new superintendent comes on board. In fact, the last time the district went through a forensic audit was in 2002, when we had our last permanent superintendent newly come in. Okay, so, the school committee voted, approved it, and we engaged John Sullivan from Melanson Heath to conduct the forensic audit. And I'm gonna just give you a couple of sentences about John's background. This is from their website, you can Google it yourself. John has worked in the field of governmental, commercial, and not-for-profit services since two, no, since 2000, sorry, since 1972, providing audit, fraud, and forensic services to organizations in Massachusetts, Vermont, and New Hampshire. He currently heads up the firm's fraud investigation division as certified fraud examiner. That comes right off the website. So, in August, John started his work. And at the time, I said, geez, how long do you think it's gonna take? And he said, well, you know, it could take, you know, six to eight weeks, and then sometimes more, but generally around that two-month period. So, we thought, okay, that's great, we'll probably have it around the start or close to the start of the school year. And then about midway through, John contacted me and said, I think I need a little bit more time, things were a little bit more complicated, took several more months. And then, a little bit later, he contacted me and said, could I please speak with your legal team? And I thought, well, okay, sure. And that's when Nan got involved, and the two of them had discussions of John and Nan, we'll talk more about that. In, at the end of last month, in December, the school committee received a draft of the document. It wasn't a complete document, we didn't have the schedules, therefore, we did not make it public. The school committee just received a final document last yesterday. And it's, there's a lot of information in here. We will make this available on the website as soon as this meeting is over. We'll also make Nan's presentation available on the website as soon as the meeting is over. So, that brings us to right now. So, how are we gonna run this meeting? I think you may have noticed on the agenda, we don't have a citizens' comment portion on the agenda for tonight, and that was intentional, because it's really important that the school committee understand what's in John's document. But, we will make every effort to make that up in our next meeting and make our public comment section longer, and I'll talk more about that when we get to the end of the evening. John's gonna, so for those at the table, John's gonna go through every section. Because there's so much information to get through, and because we need to give Nan an opportunity to present some options to us and have some discussion, I'd like you to let John go through a section. If you have a burning question, ask it. If it's a technical question, and it's not gonna allow you to understand, and I know I'm one of them, to understand, because he's talking about where it's going, it's really important that we all understand what he's saying. So, ask the question, but let me know so that we can control it. If someone's asking a question, don't ask the same question. I know sometimes we want more information, we can follow up later on with John. Let me see if I've covered it all. I think that's it. All right. So, John, I'm gonna turn it over to you, you probably need a chair.
He's resourceful.
He's resourceful. Yes, he is, he's an accountant.
Good evening. It's been long anticipated to be here and share these with you. Just a little bit more background information, over 30 years I've been doing this in Massachusetts, and one of the places I have done work before is here in Michelleburg, because in 2002, when a forensic audit was done, it was myself and our firm that did that work. It was a very different time back then, the school district had some pretty substantial deficits, and a number of different things that were going on, and so, we did similar work to this, determined the deficits, what were the deficits, where did they come from, how did they happen. We also participated and got involved, there was a need, because the deficits were so large, the general rule is that you have to cover a deficit in the next year. The deficit was too large to do that, couldn't be done, so you had to get special legislation, which would allow you to cover that deficit over a period of years. I remember it was like three years. Typical at the time, whenever the Department of Revenue supported legislation to issue deficit bonds and cover a deficit, they would take some sort of action, and in this case, was to bring in a Department of Revenue Control Board. So, a board of Department of Revenue, I think there were three reps on the board, came in and sat in a sort of supervisory role. We continued with the district for a while, we would prepare reports for the control board, we worked with them, did a number of things, helped with reassigning job descriptions and a number of things. So, you know, that was back in 2002, so we were here for a short period of time. When you hired a new assistant superintendent, we worked with that individual for a matter of months and got things integrated, and then we were finished. So, you know, fast forward to today, today is a very different situation, and we're certainly not looking at huge deficits and those kinds of things. The staffing has changed, administration has changed, and certainly, school committee has changed. And so, you know, being called in this time, you know, in a similar kind of role, but the concerns and the issues are different. You know, the issues are, you know, the school committee looking for information, the school committee wanting to know more about the finances and get into and look at some of the practices that there were questions about. So, that's the basis for the report. The first, looking at the report, the first thing I wanna do is just talk about the date on the report, because you see the date is December 19th. So, where did that date come from? That was the first preliminary draft that we provided to the school. The distribution of that draft was substantially restricted. It was provided to the chair, and to the chair, to the superintendent, the chair of the finance committee, and the legal team. We met and discussed some of the issues. We then went one step further and provided the draft to the assistant superintendent, and I individually met with the assistant superintendent, went through the draft in detail, talked about a number of issues.
Oh, oh, that's, sorry, that's Pat, no, Pat, I'm sorry. Pat is the interim business manager.
Yeah, non-assistant.
I just wanna clarify titles, sorry.
Titles are changed. So, if I may, Pat, I met with Pat. And we went through the draft in detail. So, we then issued a second version of the draft that was made available to the full school committee. At that time, the draft still wasn't complete, all of these schedules had not been issued with it. Typically, I like to put everything in the report, but, you know, once you get my age, these things just get so large that you just can't read them if you try to get them on an eight-and-a-half by 11 piece of paper. So, I put these together and have done them separately, and asked Pat to go through them also, and, you know, just to be sure that we had the facts straight. So, then on January 3rd, I delivered the final signed letterhead copy of the report, together with the schedules, and made them available, brought them into the superintendent's office. So, at that point, the reports have become public. In terms of drafts, it's important to know that, you know, first of all, I won't issue a report without a review of the drafts, and there are several reasons for that. One is that we say we're gonna do a certain scope of work, and we need to be sure that when the reports are looked at, that we fulfilled our obligation, that we've done those things, and done what you haven't expected of us. The second thing is just factual issues. You know, there's a lot of material here. Is it possible, I saw a document or talked to someone, and misinterpreted absolutely. So, an opportunity to go through the report and all the information, and make sure that everything is factually correct. And the other thing is, I then, you know, I listen, if someone disagrees with something in the report, I'll have a discussion about that. But, it's important to know, when it comes to matters of opinion, I have the fine to say, so these are my opinions. And again, much of this is, you know, like the MASBO report, a lot of this is talking about best practices. You know, we have, our firm has over 100 schools between school departments and school districts in Massachusetts, and many in New Hampshire and Vermont, so, you know, we have a sense of what best practice is, and some of it is my own interpretation of what best practices is, which may or may not, you know, others may disagree with me, so. So, with that, what I'm gonna do is go through each of the sections here in detail, because there's a lot of information here, and some of it relatively complex, and I think for many of you, absolutely new information. So, first, we have is a three-year budget trend analysis that we, we did, was an important part of this scope of this. And what I have provided to you is actually two three-year trend analyses. The reason I did that is that there have been a lot of transfers in here. And so, in looking at this, first of all, within this district, there are two types of transfers. There are transfers that go to the school committee for approval, and then, within the budgets, there are control accounts, and there's certain groupings of accounts. And the practice has been, over the last, I don't know how many years, but certainly going back for a while, the practice is that the administration can make budget transfers and adjustments within those control accounts. And so, those are both being made. And then, lastly, at the end of the year, we found that there was a very large and comprehensive transfer that had an effect in many, many of the accounts adjusted, so that the balance left over in the budget is less than a dollar. And so, you know, the number and amount of transfers, both within and outside the accounts, is numerous and large. So, I have seen this model used in other districts. I will not say this is a unique first time that I've ever seen this. I see other districts that did the same thing, you know, they make changes, they make adjustments, a combination of school committee and internal adjustments, and at the end of the year, there's a whole bunch of zeros or near zeros. I don't like to see that, for a number of reasons. One, here, when budget adjustments were made, they were made at the end of the year. So, whether it was submitted to the school committee, or whether it was transferred within control accounts by administration, and then, of course, the year-end sort of plianting up entries, all made at year-end. And from our perspective, there's no operational value to doing that. So, when do you make budget transfers? When's it appropriate to make a budget transfer? And I indicated in here, well, there are a couple of times that you can do that. For example, if there is a surplus, a large surplus in an account, that through whatever reason you determine you're not gonna need that money, well, it gives the opportunity for the school committee to look at that and say, we can reprogram, because we have things we wanna do, and here's some money available to do that. And so, that's a value. The other reason is that sometimes you have accounts that you know have a deficit, or you project and feel like you're gonna have a deficit. If you're gonna have a deficit, well, how is that going to be funded? Where's the money gonna come to fund that deficit, so that at the end of the year, you're not in a deficit? And so, looking at accounts and figuring out, well, where do we have surplus monies that can cover that? And then making that budget transfer, again, very appropriate, and it makes managerial sense to do those things. So, we also report later in here regarding, you know, quarterly reports that come to the school committee, because it has a budget, and then it has a transfer column. And so, one of the difficulties of making all of the adjustments, the way they're being made right now, is that at the end of the year, you look at a budget to actual report, and everything looks like it, you know, was basically right on budget, and it doesn't give you information that helps you when you're formulating future budgets. So, because, so what you'll see in here is that, and I kinda went overboard with it, but, you know, not, not for any other reason than to demonstrate to you that you can pick up trends in either accounts that have surplus balances, or accounts that historically are having deficit problems. And that knowledge and information is very helpful to you. And that can't be done when you're doing all of these massive transfers. So, what, what, we're suggesting, so what I did for you is, well, let's take a look at your budget to actual, both based on, you know, the budget transfers as they've been done for each of the three years, but also, let's look at the actual expenditures compared to the original budget, because then we really see, well, how far off were certain things? And so, as you see, I have pages and pages of examples that show you those trends in certain accounts. And again, it's not, not meaning to, you know, overemphasize this fact, but to provide you with information that hopefully is gonna be helpful to you in the future to make some adjustments to this. So, one of the other issues is the district's policy for transfers in general. For, and specifically, it says, "In keeping with the need for periodic reconciliation of the school department's budget, the regional school district committee will consider requests for transfers of funds as they are recommended by the superintendent." So, some of the transfers are coming to the school committee, but this doesn't address at all control accounts, or any, you know, what transfers may be made by administration without the need for the school board to feel they wanna review and weigh in on those transfers. So, you know, the recommendation is, well, you do one of two things, you either change your policy, you be consistent with the practice, or change the practice and be more clear in your policy. And it is very common in schools to allow administration to have the authority to make certain budget transfers. Oftentimes, there's a dollar limit to that, so for example, a transfer under $5,000 may be, may be reasonable. There are also certain, certain times where, you know, depending on, you know, how location-based your monitoring and your control of these accounts is, allowing like, for example, principal to make transfers within, you know, that school, or within certain sections in that school. So, this is all something that I'm recommending that the board deliberate and discuss, and see where you feel. But, make it clear in the policy, and then, that policy then becomes the guidance for which the district will go forward. Let me just see if there's anything else in this section that I missed, but I wanna call on. I did indicate, again, as part of the forensic part of this, there were a few accounts. The trend analyses show that over the last three years, you've had some pretty healthy surpluses at the end of the year, and certainly, the last one being this fiscal year, where your appropriation surplus is over a million dollars. You know, that's so much better than deficits that we saw back in 2002. But, there had this been a pattern in a few accounts, where at the end of the year, if there is surplus monies, then budget transfers were made for the purpose of making money available in certain accounts, and I think the textbook adoption account was one of them, and computer, computer hardware was another one, where we would see at the end of the year, some pretty large budget transfers over to those accounts, and money either being spent or encumbered at the end of the year, to sort of fund those. So, I just, that's, again, from a knowledge standpoint, pointing out to the board, the practice that we saw. So, our recommendations, reviewing the policy, and then, if you're going to make transfers, they certainly should be made prior to the event taking place. So, for example, if you have a surplus in account, and you wanna use that account, you know, go to the school committee and say, you know, here's a use, let's do that. But, once you've already done it, and then do a transfer to cover it, then, you know, that doesn't operationally work. So, and the same with the deficit. I mean, if you, when you know there's a deficit, it's the time to go in and say, we need to take some money from somewhere and transfer it. So, I wanna talk about this a little bit further when we get to the, there are other sections that sort of deal with this topic, and one of them's the quarterly reports that the school committee gets, and so I wanna talk about the transfers column in there, and that side kinda ties into this also. So, I would start with, are there any questions related to this section?
So, how many of you folks have questions? So, if you can, raise your hand, just so I can, I can call them. Kathy, why don't you go ahead?
Yeah, I guess that, I feel like a kid who doesn't wanna ask the question, so, because they'll feel stupid, but so just bear with me. So, these are two three-year trend analysis, those two documents here, and they, but they have different numbers, they represent different things. For example, in one of them, the balance for insurance and benefits is, no, that's a bad example, but they have different, different numbers.
No, you're absolutely right, intended to be.
Okay, so I don't understand that.
Okay, so, the purpose of this is to show one model with all of the transfers being made.
Okay.
So, when a transfer is made, it changes the balance.
Right.
Because you bring money in or out, and that expenditures stay the same, but the budget changes, so that your balance changes. So, the other model is to say, let's look at this as if you didn't make any transfers, or that you're spending money comparing it to the original voted budget.
Okay, excellent.
Okay, so that, they show very, very different pictures in terms of balance, because, you know, one, one has changes in the budget, and the other one is just the original budget.
And how do we know which one is which?
The one that says original voted budget.
Oh, original, I see it, I see it.
And the other one is actually right off the system, which is, has all the transfers in it.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Um, Lynn? So, just looking at the person for insurance, it says, we have $540,000 from the voted budget, so that was, it's surplus, right? So, that's additional money?
Yes.
The first one? This is the first page of the surplus balance?
Yes.
Pitch back. And then they adjusted this 390, so we took roughly $200,000 out and put it somewhere else.
Yes.
Was this one done at the end of the year?
Yes, with the exception of one transfer made in the three years, which was a year that you were covering the collective bargaining agreement, all transfers were made in late June, early autumn.
And then the one, and then the one below it, we all, we had deficits every year that rose pretty quickly.
So, do you have a question?
Yeah, I'm not.
So, can you give me your question?
Well, actually, I'm not even sure what the show, I mean, I'm showing that, why would somebody do that? I mean, because you wouldn't know. So, I guess that's your point, we don't know what's going on.
That's the point. The point is that, making all these adjustments at the end of the year, yes, covers the deficit, but it gives you a financial picture that isn't telling you what really went on, and the original budget to, to the actual, does tell you in terms of what you originally anticipated spending and what you spent against that.
Is this a standard accounting practice?
I have seen both models. And every time I'm involved, then this is my answer to that. So, this is not the first school that I've seen this time. Although, I will say, it's not normal to make all of these budget entries at the end of the year. Normally, when I see schools that make lots of entries, it's done every single month, and it's done during the year.
When it's needed.
When it's needed, or known, and, but then, those same schools, at the end of the year, do this housekeeping entry, that sort of moves things all over the place. You know, the other thing is, is, you know, just understand how much work this is, you know, I mean, there's pages and pages and pages of these budget entries, all of which they have to prepare, they have to enter, and, you know, I mean, it's just a lot of work to do that.
So, it's extra work, doing it the way we've been doing it is extra work?
It's extra work for the accounting staff, yes.
All right. Nan?
I have a couple, and I hope they're quick. One, John, is I'd like to circle back, when we talk about HP leases down the line, in the part where you're talking about the $152,000 that was encumbered at the end of the year?
Yes.
In addition to the existing deficit prior to the encumbrance? So, I just wanna circle back, I'm just pointing that out when we get to the lease, so, that's on page nine, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
It's on page nine. So, when we were here doing the preliminary work, we got a copy of the 2016 trial at that time. One of the things that held us up is, as we got towards the end of writing this report and doing this, it occurred to us that, well, '16 is now finalized, and we really need to go back and fix this. So, the original version of the '16 report...
So, the original version of the '16 report showed 152,000 was encumbered a year round, even though there had been a deficit in that account prior to the encumbrance. That $152,000 encumbrance was later removed. So, in the final version, both of these versions, that encumbrance is not there.
Good, and I appreciate your recommendation. That's something the school committee was trying to get done last May. There's actually an auto-recording that's online in the FinCom, in which we had a rather animated conversation about trying to understand the end balances so that we could make improvements upon the budget for future, future years. The concern that I have, I'm looking here and I'm seeing that 300, um, on page four, fiscal 2015 large transfer request was sent to the school committee on January 28th. Transferred a million dollars between accounts, and it was related to the new collective bargaining January is an awful early time in the year to understand that you have such significant surpluses in accounts. Is there anything that you, in you looking at this, was able to account for why there were such significant surpluses in these accounts that they felt comfortable enough to make these transfers without jeopardizing the rest of the budget?
I think that typical in some of the other schools that I've worked with, when you're in a negotiations year, there's, you know, some room to negotiate. If you put a line item in the budget of what you intend to fund the negotiations, you tip a hand and, you know, it's, so it's not unusual for me to see that some accounts have been budgeted very conservatively with an understanding that if the negotiation ends at a certain point, there could be money available to transfer to cover them. So, again, I've seen that done, that's not unique here.
In that process, typically, what happens is the school committee involved in that process, so that they have an executive session, they understand that money is being set aside in the budget? Or is that something the administration would come and say, hey, we need X number of additional dollars moving into the next year, and not inform the school committee of that?
Um, I think that it's typical for administration to inform the school committee that there is some surplus built into the budget. Typically, in an executive session, when you're talking about negotiations, there could be more specific discussion about how much they feel maybe in there that, you know, I think in this case, there was a reserve line item for $300,000. But as we know, the final bargaining agreement was much higher than that, so, yeah, it would be typical for administration to discuss with school committee members how far they think they could go in the existing budget, and that's just part of the deliberation that's coming.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, we got to move on.
Okay.
We can hold it to the end, and we'll, so make sure you write it down. Okay, John, go ahead.
Okay, so my next section, starting on page 12, are budget offsets. This is, again, a practice that I see sometimes in other schools, in school districts or school departments in cities and towns. The whole basis of the budget offsets is that there's money, educational costs that are paid out of grants and revolving funds. And so, and the school committee does need to vote to spend money out of not only the general operating account, but also the revolving grant funds. So, one way that that's controlled and done is through the use of offsets. And so, what is done here and in some other places is that a gross budget is deliberated on by the school committee. Built into that budget, and in your budget, there's a line at the bottom that says offsets. So, you take the total budget, then minus the offsets, and then you come up with a net budget. And then also in your budget documents, there's a separate page in the budget documents that details what the budget offsets are and what accounts they are, so. So, that's the first part of it. The second part of that, then, is once the budget is adopted, then money is spent out of the general operating budget that then needs to be offset by these revolving grant funds. So, what happens, again, is, and most, and I've got offset schedules in here that you can see, is, you know, over a 10-month period, you know, 1/10 of the budget would get transferred over and come into the general fund to offset actual expenses, so that the actual is compared to the budget, both netted. And when you do that, then in the revolving and grant funds, those expenses are then in those funds. And so, that, you know, that's the basis and the theory behind it. The difficulty in these is that, you know, number one, it's, it's, the budget is pretty transparent, because you say, well, this is what we voted. But then what happens after that isn't as clear, because you're looking at budget reports that all this offset stuff may or may not have even happened. And we'll talk about that more again when we get to the quarterly reports. But, so, you know, I'm one that doesn't like budget offsets, and I still have clients that continue to do them. So, what I've done for you, and again, information to the board, to the committee, so that they're understanding, you know, the breadth of what's going on here, is giving you some schedules of these offsets. And in those, what I do is, I take the budgeted amounts voted in each of the offset categories, and then I go through the transactions that happened during the year. So, you'll see some of them happened over 10 months, some of them happened once a year. You'll see that some of them, the budget exactly, get transferred over. You see some of them where a budget was voted, but no transfers ever got made. You see some of them where transfers were made, but it was never voted. You know, there were a few grants that we're not sure whether those grants were going to come in or not, so they didn't get put into the offset budget, but then came in, so the transfers were made.
John, I have additional JEs, just for...
Journal entries.
Okay, that's my thought. Thank you.
That's how the transfers get made, is the journal entries. So, you know, my concern on, you know, several concerns related to this. One is that you can't, it's hard for you, if you need information, like I just gave you, in terms of like the schedule of the budget account and everything, that would take, you know, your accounting department, huge amount of time to prepare those, you know, even every quarter, because you have to go into transactions, pull up the information. There's not a report that comes off the system that produces that. So, it's difficult to know and monitor and understand. So, you know, we recommend that the district discontinue using offsets accounts. And, but at the same time, if you do that, you then have to vote out of the grants and revolving funds, that, you know, so much money is going to be spent out of those funds. So that, you know, for, so the other thing that we see in here, and more so when you look at the revolving fund schedules, is that a lot of these revolving funds spend money directly out of it and have money that's transferred over to the, or should be, as an offset, over to the general account. So, it's kind of got both mixed into it again. Again, it makes it much more difficult to try to understand and follow what's happening there. So, school committee should vote to expend from the general operating budget as well as grant revolving funding, as separate votes. I also put in here, there's one account, which I believe is the extended day account, extended day account, where instead of using it as a, instead of using it as an offset, what you have done in your budget is put it in your revenue budget, okay? And so, the effect of putting it in the revenue budget is, you know, the way you calculate your member assessments, is you take your total appropriations and minus certain revenues that you're going to receive, and this is one of those revenues that gets budgeted there, so that the assessments are netted. But the problem with doing that, I mean, like, with the offset accounts that go against expense accounts, there's at least a reasonable assurance that there are actual expenses that are being paid that are getting covered by the revolving accounts. Whereas in this, you're just transferring money over to the general fund. So, you know, a concern is that, well, if someone says, well, you're just, you know, subsidizing the budget by using surpluses in extended day, and, you know, why should you use extended day money to do other things with? So, it opens up that question. So, what we see, and it's not unusual, is that, you know, some revolving accounts, you know, occupy space. They're not your core educational programs, but they occupy space, they occupy custodial time, and there are costs in the operating budget that relate to providing that program. And that is absolutely proper, to recover and use those costs. So, but what needs to be done is, that needs to be documented. Okay? So, what should be done every year is, if you're going to budget and bring revenue over, basically, we call it an indirect cost, there should be a spreadsheet prepared to say, okay, you know, this is the electricity, these are supplies, custodial time, and these are the things that we pay for out of our operation budget that helps and subsidizes the revolving funds. So, then, then that clears up the question of, you know, whether you're using that money appropriately or not.
Any questions? Let's pick Nicole first, Neil, if that's okay.
Just to clear up what you were talking about with extended days, so there should not be a surplus at the end of the year with extended day?
Sure.
Like, what should the district do with any surplus?
So, revolving funds are a product of Massachusetts general laws, and they allow you to collect certain revenues and separate them from your general operating budget. And then you spend those revenues on the programs for which you're raising money. So, what happens when you have a surplus in a fund like an extended day program is, then people say, well, you're charging too much for the program. Okay? So, you want to say, no, we're not charging too much for the program. What we're doing is, there are other costs that we want to pay out of that account besides the direct salaries and so forth. So, in general, revolving funds do not operate at a surplus. And I've many times been involved with DESI and, you know, looking at accumulation of large balances in revolving funds, and that should not be taken into place.
So, I'd like to talk about extended day for a moment, if we could. So, with extended day, this is basically parent, a parent-funded revolving account. There are tuitions or fees for after-school programs or during vacations or whatnot that the parents who pay to have their children participate. Okay? So, this being listed as a revenue account, and it's grown substantially as far as the amount of revenue that was taken over the course of, I believe, the three years that we looked at. And it's tens of thousands, I'm not sure exactly how much, but it's grown considerably. Can you see anywhere where there were actually a rationale for the offsets? Or is there anything that doesn't indicate that this is not a made-up number? In other words, to create revenue and just place into the revenue box, given that it's grown so quickly and that we had, and I'm sorry, but that we had a deficit, and then from that deficit, we were able to draw into the reserve funds and pull money out of that deficit, and then, again, that's being used in the general fund. So, almost a way to tap into, in my, the way that I perceive things. Is there anything in what I'm saying that is not...
So, the answer to your question is, I did not see a spreadsheet or a schedule or a calculation that documented the amount of money that was being pulled out of extended day to be put into the offset. It wasn't offset, but it's, has the same functional purpose as an offset, you know? You get down to a bottom-line number either way.
Right.
And so, it has the same purpose as an offset, but it was treated differently and treated as a revenue. But I did not see a schedule that was used to calculate and come up with that.
So, no necessary, like, what we'll call, just for simplicity's sake, expenses to offset what was being pulled out? It was just a number that was sort of placed in the revenue column without any explanation to it?
Again, I did not see a spreadsheet or schedule or calculation. That's the point.
Okay, thank you.
So, going forward, you would recommend that the extended day revolving, revolving account would then present, or the school would present to that account, a basically invoice of all these soft costs, custodial fees, and then that account would pay the district, and then we would have a very clear idea of what was coming in, what was going out, and where it's going? Is that...
And above and beyond the bill, as part of the budget process, too.
Okay.
So, if you're going to put X dollars in the budget as a revenue, then that should be supported by an estimation of what the cost is going to be.
And if at the end of that, there is a surplus, then we reevaluate fees and things in order to use up that surplus in going forwards, so that you're not being accused of overcharging people and then offsetting, I hate the word offset, supplementing your existing operating budget. Okay, can I have one more question?
Yeah.
Okay, so this, I want to just look at Title I, because it's a single offset that's here that's across three years. It's $90,000 each year.
Yes.
The variance, the end of '14 is $44,000, it's 35-something. So, in '16, my assumption is that the charges were, we used it the way you're recommending, that charges were, it was not used as an offset, it was charges for Title I were paid directly out of the Title I account.
Exactly.
Is that, so that's where we want to go going forward? That's your recommendation?
Yes, so, so these charges can still go against the revolving funds.
Right.
So, it's just not a need to pay them out of the general fund and then reimburse them through an offset.
Okay. So, is this the complete list of our offsets at the moment?
Yes.
Offset, okay. So, we just would need to figure out, transfer these into revolving funds that then were directly paid for their actual operating costs?
Right, you need to continue this in '17, because your budget was voted.
Right.
But when you develop your 2018 budget, you can go through and, you know, redo the budget.
Because that's where we're, that's where we're at right now. So, so that's what you recommend? That's how you see this getting cleared up and our ability to guarantee that the, what we're spending is what we're actually, or what we're paying is what we're actually spending?
Right.
Okay.
And that combined with, as we'll talk later in a couple of different sections, with quarterly reports, and providing reports to the school committee of not only balances, but activities in the revolving funds. So, if it's all paid out of the revolving funds, then it's, you know, it's pure.
May I ask another question?
Oh, a quick one, yes.
Yeah, so, using Title I again as an example, and looking that for three years, the district received $90,000 for Title I. So, for '14 and '15, there should be no variance, that should be zeroed out.
Well, again, it could be that, in the end, a certain physician was paid out of Title I that originally had been budgeted as an offset in the general account, so that what actually happened in Title I, as it does, is a combination of expenses that are paid out of the Title I fund directly and offsets. So, I'm not saying that Title I didn't pay everything, that they were expected, that there was a surplus in Title I because of this, but it can get confusing as to whether it gets paid directly out of Title I, or if it gets paid out of the general fund and then the offset comes over.
So, the assumption is the variances were paid for other, you know, directly out of the funds? So, they don't, they're not surpluses, they just were, they were used differently. They weren't used as offsets, they weren't paid out, they were paid directly from those funds.
I guess my point is that, in my experience, there is accountability through the state for grants like Title I, and if you have surplus in your account, they want to know about it and why, and I don't know...
Usually, you have to return it, don't you?
So, does that have...
Well, I mean, Title I is much, much larger than $90,000, and there's a lot of cost paid on Title I. So, there's only a piece of Title I that is in the offset.
So, the Title I $90,000 here, you're saying the district received more in Title I?
That's not what you receive in Title I. That's what you budgeted as a general fund. That's what you budgeted as a general fund offset to be paid out of Title I.
Got it.
All right. Mark?
So just to review or to give you the opportunity to reiterate, can you say again how you would advise that we simplify the many transfers that happened from the offset, via the offset method, to some new regime? Can you say again what your simplifying conception is for a recommendation on a newer, different regime?
So what I'm recommending is that expenses be paid right out of the revolving funds. So instead of paying the expenses out of the general operating fund and then going to the revolving fund and transferring money out of the revolving fund and by journal entry, bringing it over and decreasing the expenses in the operating fund. So you have to do that both in terms of developing your budget, and then the accounting department, as they pay bills, will pay directly out of the revolving grant funds rather than paying out of one and reimbursing it.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Revolving funds?
So now we go to revolving funds. So the district uses revolving funds set forth as they should, if you do. Previous section details the offset accounts. The use of offsets does not change the purpose and requirements as to the receipt and disbursement of result in revolving funds. The only difference is how the transactions are processed and where they end up being reported. The revolving fund schedules distinguish amounts spent directly out of the funds and amounts transferred in the general operating budget. So the schedules that we have provided to you, there's a schedule for revolving funds. So what you'll note here is that, again, we just, it took us a long time to put this together, but for each revolving fund, we show the beginning balance, the revenue that's coming in, what was expended directly out of that fund, what was transferred to the general fund as an offset, and then the ending balance. And there's two sets of revolving fund schedules. One is for the athletic revolving funds, and one is for the other revolving funds. But again, both of them, I put this together in a way that there's a column for the offset set of fund expenditures, so you can see in here what's getting spent out of the fund and what's getting transferred by way of offsets. So I go through the revolving funds, extended day. Most of the expenses related to extended day are paid right out of the extended day revolving fund. And then there's an annual transfer to the operating budget, which is, so we just talked about all that. So in the extended day fund, you see that transfer out into the general fund as revenue in the general fund, and then, but most of the expenditures are paid directly out of the account. The preschool revolving fund is funded through parent fees. Almost all expenditures are paid out of the operating budget in this count and reimbursed through offset accounts. The offset account is fed teachers' salaries. This account has grown from $269,000 at the beginning of fiscal '14 to $377,000 at the end of '16, which may be in part because you're not reimbursing everything you could potentially out of the operating fund, or, again, you just, the balance is just keeping increasing. So it's, at this point, is a pretty large balance.
Is that Bolton-Stowe preschool, Bolton-Mycaster's going, so is there a separate line revolving fund for the Mycaster preschool?
The, some of these accounts have name problems, you know, but...
I just was curious, it was...
So there's Bolton slash Stowe preschool is the account that I examined.
Okay, so any idea?
Could be misnamed.
Could be misnamed. We have others that are misnamed.
Okay.
It could be all three.
It is all three? Okay, thank you.
So again, you can see, if you go to the revolving fund schedule, you can see that almost all the money coming out of these or going over as offsets. Building use, that's another one that, I mean, I have seen in various places, three different names, athletic field fees, custodial revolving, and building use. Revenue is generated through fees for the use of buildings, including charges to cover custodial overtime. In fiscal '14, the athletic field bond was paid directly out of the account, even though there was an offset put in the budget. In '15, the account was used to pay the athletic bond for $35,500, and at the end of the year, the account was used to pay a deficit in the electricity account of $37,679. So again, this is a case where, you know, without this offset thing, you don't see this kind of thing. So typically, that would have been a transfer that I would have expected, since it wasn't in the budget, and it was different, I would have expected that transfer to come to the school committee. And then back in 2016, it was $40,000, and it was used to pay the athletic field bond. So the building use revolving fund itself has grown from $130,000 at the beginning of '14 to $256,000 at the end of '16, so it's doubled during this period. Third-party tuition, so it's a tuition reimbursement from non-neighbor towns for student-placed and district programs. In '14, $25,000 and $100,000 offset the spent tuition account. Remaining spent out of the account does not appear appropriate for the account, including expenditures such as robotics team transportation, peaceful playgrounds recess package, and some stipends. And in '15 and '16, there are also stipends. So again, you know, the third-party tuition, I mean, these are reimbursements for special education-related tuitions, and one would expect them to be spent on special education-related tuitions, or special education-related costs. Balance in the account has increased from $115,000 at the beginning of 2014 to $157,000 at the end of 2016. So that, too, has grown, but not by as much. Guidance, there was no issues with guidance, that was fine. The parking fund, $15,000 was offset, and '16, $30,000 was offset against ground supplies. Minimal amounts, very little is spent directly out of that fund. But that fund has stayed pretty flat because each year, you know, money was taken out of it and transferred over to as an offset. Circuit breaker, so, you know, first thing to understand is, the money you receive in this fiscal year 2017 is based on costs that you paid in 2016. So you get the money a year behind when you spend it. Circuit breaker is a state program where they're reimbursing you for excessive special education costs, and that's defined as four times the state average foundation budget per pupil, calculated under a Chapter 70 program. So basically, you submit a report to the state of special education cost per student, you know, for each of the students, and then they do this calculation. They say, "Okay, what's four times the state average for a normal student?" And then there's, if it's higher than that, then they pay 75% of that differential, and then you get that each year. Each year, the district has used the prior year's balance in Circuit Breaker revolving fund as a budgeted offset in subsequent years. They've all been used to offset special education tuitions as they should. Balance at the end of '15 was $884,500, and that was used in the 2017 budget. So that's an accepted common practice, so it's a good thing to be using that money a year behind, so then you know how much it is instead of having to guess, you know, because you don't know until your report is submitted and they go through the calculation. So that works.
So that actually is one account that, how would you get rid of that single budget offset? Because you're not paying anything, are you...
You charge the tuitions directly to that.
Directly to that account, okay. Thank you.
School choice is different. So starting in '14, there was a very large balance, $1,003 in the account, and then in fiscal '15, 1.3 was offset, reduced that, but then in fiscal '15, the district didn't receive sufficient revenues to cover that and rebuild the 1.3 million dollar offset. In fiscal '16, it went down to 1.1 million dollars, but at the end of that, there was only $219,000 in the account. So I'm saying this in the three years, it's gone from 1.3 million down to 200,000. So when you appropriated for fiscal '17 for the first time ever, you didn't have enough money in that account to cover what you're looking to spend in fiscal '17. So you're using not only the balance, but this year's receipts that are coming in to cover costs that you're planning on spending out of that account. So that's different than the way Circuit Breaker was used, and so it's a combination of using more than was coming in and the fact that your school choice revenues have been significantly declining over the three years. So what it's going to mean in future years is that there's less money available to you, and it's certainly more risky if you're projecting to spend what you're going to get in and you don't know how much that's going to be. So the years where you were spending the balance from previous year, you know, was fiscally conservative. Athletic revolving funds, so there's several accounts, and I have a separate schedule for the athletic revolving funds. Gate receipts go into the high school athletic revolving fund, and then user fees for each school, High School Hale, Barban, and Sawyer. We provided a three-year schedule for that. So basically, the way it has been used in the past three years is, you look at the balance in the operating account, and if it has a deficit, then an amount has been transferred over from the fund to cover that deficit, so the balance is zero. And so, again, these are accounts where I would suggest that you not do offsets, that, you know, you budget how much you're going to spend out of those revolving funds, you know, the gate receipts and the user fees, and you spend them directly out of those funds.
Okay. Let's let John finish.
Okay, so, you know, in the revolving funds section, I just, just again, say discontinued use of offsets. A separate budget should be submitted to the school committee for the use of grants in revolving funds. Reports of activity in revolving funds should be provided to the school committee, not less than quarterly. And those reports should include the balance received year-to-date, expended year-to-date, and the ending balance. Expenditures out of each revolving fund should be restricted to the purpose of the fund and made in compliance with Massachusetts general laws and DESI guidelines, so that you're not spending things out of the fund that really has nothing to do with that fund.
Okay. Lynn has some questions, thanks, boy.
As you're talking, the, because of the way we've done this, and these offsets have been growing, are we basically inflating the budget?
So you are some of, with the exception of the school choice fund, have been growing every year. So you're not using everything that you potentially could be using, but you may be using everything that you justify you're using. So, no, I mean, it's not, I wouldn't say it's inflating the budget, because, so as an example, if, let's just say in 2018, you build your budget, you're going to reduce your budget by the amount of the offsets, but you're also going to vote money to be spent out of grants in revolving funds. So in the end, you're spending an equivalent of the same total amount of money, it's just spending it differently.
In some of those, you have to, if we have reserves in some of those particular programs, you can't use those reserves, as I understand it, for anything but that program? Is that correct?
Each program has to be looked at individually, based on what are the rules and where, what's the source of the money? You know, certainly athletic user fees and athletic gate receipts, you've got a pretty broad spectrum of what you can use that money for, as long as it's related to athletics. You know, there's very few restrictions. But if you're using revolving funds that have parent or student fees that are being used for a specific purpose, and those funds every year are increasing, you've got to ask yourself, the question is, do we need to charge quite this much money for these programs?
Or do we need to offset the expense of running the program?
Or have we covered all of the costs of running the program?
That's what I mean, yeah.
But we need to justify those costs.
And that's probably where we need to look, right? Or Pat needs to look.
Right.
But Lynn, go ahead and finish your...
But just to be a little specific, the fields, the athletic fields, so the athletic revolving account keeps growing, yet we've been getting capital expenses requests for, you know, new pellets, a machine to clean it, you know, so, I mean, that shouldn't be going through, I mean, that should be going through the revolving account, right?
So the first thing, you've got to clean up the name and the transactions in that account, and some of that relates to the athletic field bond, and the other is money that's available. But you're right, I mean, if here's an account that's accumulating revenue, and it's a pretty broad spectrum of how you can use that money. It's not like extended day. You know, that money is coming in for usage. You know, people are using your facilities, and they're paying you for the usage. And there's a pretty broad spectrum as to how you could spend that money. So yes, if that account is growing every year, that's money that would be available to you to spend for things that you may be appropriating and paying for out of the general fund.
Okay. So can we, are we good? Because I want to move on, because we've got quite a big, you know, chunky section. Real quick?
Just a couple of quick ones.
One quick one, and then hold another one till the end, please?
So I have to pick the most important one here?
Pick the most important one. And then while you're looking, Kathy, you'll jump in real quick.
Jump in, Kathy.
So I just want to be clear, make sure I understand. So take Florence Sawyer user fees. So at the end of FY '16, there was a balance in that account of $43,450. Did you say that that money has been used to go into the general account to balance that, to zero out that, so that they start like FY '17 with that account, or did I misunderstand something?
So within the general fund budget, you can look at athletics.
Are we looking at the...
See, the athletics...
The original or the other one?
Well, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the original.
Okay.
I guess you can look at the other one. I know. Hey, guys. Well, John looks other, I want to, we're going to have to kind of like move things forward. I know you have a lot of questions. We're going to be able to come back at the end of tonight, and then we'll talk about bringing John back for the next meeting, so if you want to...
So for example, game officials, the budget and the actual is zero, and coaches, the budget and the actual is zero. And this is not transfers that are made, this is money that came from the revolving fund over here to cover the cost of that program, too, so that it would be zero.
Instead of paying it directly out of the revolving fund?
Yes.
I see, okay.
It's got to be really quick, because we really are tight now.
So when we're doing the athletic user fees, did you come across anything about unpaid athletic user fees, like an account that showed any of the outstanding balances over the years that have not been collected?
I did not. I know that was an issue that was brought up.
Nothing was written against, like, an account for taking the loss against collected fees or anything like that?
Well, the records, the revenue is only recognized when it comes in here. So if it hasn't been collected, it's not in here.
Thank you.
Part of the reports, Carol?
Quarterly reports, you know, a number of issues. One is that we couldn't see in all three years, we didn't see where the final report, so we see for second, third quarter, but we didn't see where the final report came to the school committee with discussion. You know, it's, you know, here's the end of the year, and this is how we made out, and these are the accounts that were problematic. You know, there were certainly times where I saw in the minutes where a school committee was informed about an issue, even after the end of the year, but, you know, I would... But, you know, I would like to see, you know, a full presentation of the final report to the school committee. They're prepared on a district spreadsheet based on information obtained from the financial management system. So they're not reports that come off the financial management system, they're spreadsheets that are completed from information coming off that. The quarterly reports include the budget before offsets, so it's the gross budget. And then the next column is a transfer column. So my problem with that transfer column is it's full of all of those offset transfers. So when you take those offset transfers and combine them and mix them in with other transfers, I mean, there's just no way you can understand what's been, you know, what are the transfers that you've dealt with as an issue. So, you know, going back to my recommendation on transfers, first of all, if your first column is the net budget after offsets, then the second column is transfers and then you can see if you make transfers or you have administration make transfers, you can much more clearly see transfers that have been made during the year. So that transfer column becomes much more informational. And that wouldn't matter whether they're within or without whichever way you decide. Transfers for net actual offsets, if you look at the offset schedules, many of them you'll see ten equal transfers, but like the athletics budget, you know, one transfer made at the end of the year. And there are some offsets that are made in one or two transfers during the year. So the thing is, if you get a March thirty-first quarterly report and you've got offsets in there that haven't been transferred yet, then it's distorted by the fact that those transfers haven't yet been made. District encumbrance payroll within the financial management system, which is included in the reports produced from the system. But administration does not report the payroll encumbrances on the quarterly reports. Well, since payroll is the majority of district expenditures, then you're not seeing a big piece of what's encumbered during the year. So what I've recommended and set up here for you as a model that I've worked with other school districts or other school departments, where basically you have a budget column, you have a transfer column, so you've got an adjusted budget column, you have actual expended, and then you have encumbered, which is everything encumbered in school, including payroll. And then a column for projections. Okay? Because what happens is not all payroll accounts do get encumbered. So like your tutors and substitutes and things like that, if they don't have a contract, they're not encumbered. So this is a place to figure out and calculate that, as well as other things that just don't get encumbered during the year. So if they're quarterly reports, you know, I think it's not too much of a strain on the accounting office, especially if you adopt some of my other recommendations, getting rid of a bunch of transfers and offset accounts. You know, I think that that's something that can be done on a quarterly basis, so that when you're getting your quarterly reports, you've got a much more comprehensive, complete report that you can look at. And then many times like this year where there's a million dollars surplus, you know, you might see that much, much earlier in the year. So, recommendations include payroll encumbrances in the quarterly reports, include a projected column to estimate costs needed to complete the year, report the budget net of offsets or eliminate the offsets, so the budget transfers can be better tracked. Include activity schedules for grant revolving funds in the quarterly reports and present a final year-end report to the school committee and discuss results.
Lynn? You said that the reports are distorted, so I'm wondering, are we reporting to the agencies that we're supposed to report to accurately?
So all of that is adjusted by the end of the year. So by the end of the year, all of the offsets have been transferred over. So what I'm saying is your interim quarterly reports can be distorted, depending on whether or not the offsets have been transferred or not. But by the end of the year, you know, I think that all the adjustments have been made and everything's appropriate. So I think your end-of-year report...
But then we're not getting the year-end report.
What's that?
Did you say...
Well, when I say the year-end report, you're talking about being reported to outside agencies.
Right.
So your end-of-year report that you give to DESI.
Okay.
You know, all those adjustments have been made and, you know, so you don't close out your books till sometime in September, sometime, some years even later than that. So, you know, by that time, as I indicated, when I first started work here, I got a preliminary 2016. But then, as I neared finishing this in November, I called Pat and said, "Are we finished?" And so I then got a new report and adjusted all of my stuff to report. So I don't have any evidence or knowledge that you reported to any outside agencies incorrectly, with the exception of the lease disclosures that we're talking about right here.
Yeah, we've got to get to that. Any else?
So, John, could you just, I hope it's a yes or no, but, so based on the fact that everything is, we have everything zeroed out at the end of the year, we have offsets and transfers, et cetera, that are being, for lack of a better word, commingled. Is there any sense that you get that any school committee could successfully understand, comprehensively understand the budget and the budget process? In other words, the needs, where specific issues may lie, et cetera, based on the way that things have been reported out to us?
Well, you know, as I indicated in the report, I think that offsets can make it confusing and you lose transparency, which makes it more difficult. I think that the quarterly reports that you have that don't have encumbrances for payroll or projections to the end of the year make it. And the fact that you're not getting revolving fund and grant reports, you know, you're not getting all of the information that in our opinion you need as a school committee to, you know, be doing what you need to do.
Thank you.
Okay. Any more questions for this section?
Leases. Okay, so the district has made extensive use of leases on other financing loans or agreements for the purchases of computer hardware and software, vehicles, maintenance equipment. Many of these leases and financing agreements were not taken to the school committee for approval. Some of the loans and capital leases were not recorded in the district's accounting records and accordingly were not included in the district's audited financial statements. I'm going to start by saying, school committee policy is not clear on the authority of the superintendent or other administrative employees to sign contracts or agreements on behalf of the school district, including leases, loans, financing agreements. It's also not clear what contracts, other than those types of things, need school committee authorization. So a lot of the school committees that I work with may set a dollar amount of five thousand dollars, but any contract, lease, agreement, anything, requires vote of the school committee before the superintendent or whoever the school committee designates as the individual having authority to sign on behalf of the school district. So that's definitely, as I said, most of them have very clear written policies regarding Lease and loan documents were signed by the superintendent, so I put in a new paragraph here from the last version that the school committee got. So this is one of the changes that were made. Lease and loan documents were signed by the superintendent, the assistant superintendent or both. But I'm making it clear, the superintendent is the superintendent during fiscal year fourteen and fifteen and July one through December thirty-one of fifteen. It is not the interim superintendent that was here January one through June thirty of sixteen. I did not see any of the documents that I examined that contained that interim superintendent The assistant superintendent referred to was here all of 2014, fifteen and sixteen. Massachusetts general laws establish the authority of school districts to enter into lease agreements not exceeding five years. Mass. general laws do not distinguish between operating leases and capital leases. Capital lease is the equivalent of purchase of equipment through a financing agreement. They are different. When you think about it, in a regular operating lease, you're using someone else's property for a certain term. A capital lease, you're buying something and you're financing it over a period of years. They're very different transactions. Massachusetts general laws also provide procedures for districts to enter into loans or notes which require authorization from member towns. And so we'll be discussing that. Operating leases and capital leases should be treated differently in financial statements. Whether an operating lease, when it's an operating lease, the accounting principles require disclosure in the footnotes of your future lease payments as information. But if it's a capital lease, it's treated like a purchase and the financing agreement is treated like debt. And it's accounted for that way in the financial statements. So there are things that should be reflecting that debt, both in the core financial statements and in the disclosure. So what we saw is that, again, because not all of the capital leases and the loans, the two notes, were not run through the books of the district, those transactions and the capital leases did not get reported in the financial statements. So I've got in here, for fiscal thirteen, fourteen and fifteen, sixteen has not been completed. I don't have a copy of it. I know that they know about these transactions now and they will be fully reported and disclosed in the 2016 financial statements. But in fourteen, fifteen, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, these were not reported in the financial So what I want to do is I want to go through a number of the more significant of these financing agreements with you. Hewlett Packard annual lease goes back over 2004, which is a period just after we were here back in 2002, 2003. The way this worked is the district executed a lease agreement with Hewlett Packard Financial Services, not Hewlett Packard Computers, but a leasing company called Hewlett Packard Financial Services for a three-year period. Hewlett Packard Financial Services remits the full dollar amount of the lease to an escrow account at Deutsche Bank. So they actually take the physical money for the principal amount of the lease and put it into Deutsche Bank in an escrow account. And so then what happens after that is the district goes out and finds equipment to buy. And this is all related to computer equipment, much of it used in the schools for education purposes. Goes out and finds the equipment and then submits the invoices to Deutsche Bank, who then pays the bills, the invoices. Hence, they never get recorded on the books. The only time they get recorded is when you start making the lease payments to Hewlett Packard, the lease payments get recorded. But the actual transaction of taking out that money and spending it on equipment doesn't get processed through the books. So they're not on warrants. You typically sign warrants for the purchase, but you don't sign warrants for the computer equipment that was purchased through these leases. So I've given you for fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, the face value of the leases that were executed. We were not able to find evidence that any of the Hewlett Packard leases were presented and voted on by the school committees. The leases and escrow documents obtained were signed either by the superintendent, the assistant superintendent or both. The future value of the lease payments was disclosed in the financial statements. So this was treated as an operating lease, it was not treated as a capital lease. And the lease obligations were properly disclosed in the financial statements for this. But what we did for you is we included a complete list of all the equipment purchased under each of the leases for the three years that we did. So you've got that as a supporting schedule. Shows you how all of that money has been spent. Clinton Savings Bank, these are actual bank notes, they're not leases. They're not written in such a way that they're leases. So there were two notes that were executed. One was in December of 2015 for eighteen thousand, nine sixty-nine, and it was for the purpose, the purchase of two mowers with attachments. All documents were signed by the assistant superintendent. The school committee approved the financing agreement on December second, 2015. However, we found no evidence that the loan was ever disclosed or authorized by the member towns. So this is a case where loans, notes and loans are required by chapter seventy-one to go through and have to go through the proper process to get approved by the member The loan documents that were received indicate that the loan proceeds were deposited in the district's bank account, but in fact, that did not happen. We did not find evidence that a deposit of that money was ever made in the bank account. So our belief is that the bank paid the vendor directly. I bet a bill was submitted to the bank likely due with the Deutsche Bank. The bill was submitted to the bank and the bank made the payment to the vendor. The transaction is off books and the proceeds were not recorded in the district's accounting records and the disbursement for the purchase was not run through the warrant process. And then the second one is a 2013 Chevy Silverado, done in September of 2013, thirty-eight thousand, four eighty-five, plus interest. The note and security agreements were signed by the assistant superintendent based on a certificate of authority signed by the superintendent that the assistant superintendent had authority to sign the note. We found no evidence that this borrow was submitted to, this borrowing was submitted to either the school committee or the member towns. The transaction's off books, proceeds were not recorded, disbursement did not run through the warrant, loan commitment was not recorded or disclosed in the district's fourteen or fifteen audited financial statements. In our opinion, it should have been both recorded in the financial statements and disclosed in the footnotes as a debt instrument. Wells Fargo is a lease purchase agreement, January of 2015, forty-six thousand, three oh six, plus interest. The lease was for a Chevy van. And it was set up so that the van would be purchased by the school district for one dollar at the end of the lease term. School committee authorized the lease purchase at their January twenty-eighth, 2015 meeting. All lease documents were signed by the assistant superintendent and/or the superintendent. There was also an attorney certificate indicating that the proper district authorizations had been obtained. The lease commitment was not recorded or disclosed in the district's 2015 audited financial statements, opinion that should have been. John Deere lease purchase agreement, January of 2013, a John Deere utility tractor attachments for eighty-six thousand, nine sixty-eight, plus interest, over five years. We did not see evidence that the school committee authorized the execution of the lease. All lease documents were signed by the assistant superintendent. There was an attorney certification indicating that proper district authorization had been obtained. The loan commitment was not recorded or disclosed in the district's 2013 and subsequent audited financial statements. And the last one is leasing innovations, negotiated a five-year lease purchase agreement with leasing innovations, forty-one thousand, nine twenty-eight, for purchase of and use of financial management software for payroll and human services and related software and services. All lease documents were signed by the superintendent and/or the assistant superintendent. There was also an attorney certification indicating that proper district authorizations had been obtained. Lease appears to be properly disclosed in fiscal 2002, twelve, thirteen and fourteen because it was an operating lease, they had included it as part of their operating lease disclosures. We did, I guess I omitted, but I did not see an indication that that was approved, authorized by the school committee either. So my recommendations, the school committee should amend policies to clarify which contracts and agreements require school committee approval and who within the administrative offices is authorized to sign and execute contracts and agreements. All capital purchases funded through a financing agreement, whether termed as a lease or not, should be recorded in the district's books when the transaction is executed. The purchase of equipment should be processed through a warrant. Any purchase of assets through a loan or note with lending institutions... Any purchase of assets through a loan or note with lending institution should be sent to the member towns for the appropriate authorization before being executed. Now, what I will say is that there is going to be discussion later with your legal team regarding should capital leases that in effect are financing agreements for the purchase of the equipment and in effect debt? Should those also go through the member towns? And I think that things are not clear enough for me that I'm leaving it to the legal team to address and give you an opinion. Questions?
Questions, Neil?
I definitely have a couple.
Okay, well, then, if you've got a couple, let Kathy go first.
So a couple of times, under Wells Fargo, and then the other one, the John Deere lease purchase, there was mention of an attorney certification indicating that proper district authorizations had been obtained. And in both cases, the school committee hadn't had the okaydom. And in one instance, it perhaps should have gone to the member towns. So does that certification of proper district authorization mean that the school committee cited and that the member towns, or was it just that? What does it mean if you have an attorney certification like that?
What it means is the attorney felt that the documentation that the attorney looked at met the statutory requirements.
Which would have been that the member towns had approved it?
I can't speak to what another attorney's opinion or what documentation they looked at.
But, forget, no, we're not talking about what that individual did. What, how is it, how should it work? What would they be looking for? Like, when you certify something and...
We can jump in on this one.
Great.
What I would personally ask for is copies of the minutes of the school committee meeting showing that the lease was authorized by the school committee. And in the case of a loan, I would ask for either the passage of sixty days, we'll get into this during our presentation, either the passage of sixty days without disapproval by a member town or approval by a member town.
Okay, so there's...
That's what I personally would ask for.
Okay.
I can't speak to what the attorney asked for at the time.
No, yeah, we're not doing that. We're trying to figure out how's it supposed to work.
Is approval town meeting approval?
Yes. Yes, in the case of loans, yes.
So, does that help you?
Well, yes, it will. Yes, I got the information I need and this...
Digesting.
Well, I just threw up a little bit my mouth.
Okay, well, that's great. Thanks for that, everybody. Let's do Neil, because I asked him to hold off.
So, thank you. This whole thing was, you know, an exercise in best practice and so forth. When we got to this part, it disturbed me, frankly. And there are some questions that I have that I hope we can get some answers to, John, that you can help us out. So these are off-book transactions that we're talking about, which means essentially, like I took a loan out personally, I'm using an analogy, I took a loan out personally and my wife has no idea about it. And the payments are being made somehow through the kids' savings funds or whatever, but payments are being made and not, there's no specific checking account line item, no? Is that not...
So it would be fair to characterize, since these are operating, characterize as operating leases, they went through our general ledger and through our payments as a quote-unquote "lease payment," but they're off-books in the sense that the asset is not booked as an asset and the liability as a payable in future is not booked. Is that what you mean by off-the-books?
Okay, so that's partly true. So typically with a loan or a borrowing, the proceeds are usually put in the budget. It can be run either through a capital project fund, which most of your other loan proceeds or bonds would be run through a capital project fund, where the proceeds of the debt instrument are deposited into that account. And the payment and purchase of the equipment is run through the warrant process, just like any other district expenditure. So that did not happen. There, and again, it's a little questionable about the capital leases, but, you know, most of the places that I work, the proceeds of a capital lease, because these are financing agreements, this is different than going to John, well, I guess in the case of John Deere, they did buy a John Deere tractor. In the case of Hewlett Packard, they didn't buy anything from Hewlett Packard. But, you know, we typically would see those kinds of things, you know, like let's just take the HP leases, even though technically it's not a capital lease because it's purchasing things that are not capital and be put on the assets. But it's a financing agreement and proceeds are being issued. In this case, so an escrow agent could just as easily have been issued to the district. But, you know, the proceeds should come in as another financing source and you should be paying it out of a line item for the purchase of the capital equipment.
Okay, and so that being said, are you comfortable, I mean, can you say that all of these off-book transactions, that there's none that's out there that you haven't come across at this point?
I can't say there may be things out there that I've come across, absolutely. In the case of, you know, finding where the lease payments are, you know, in HP, it's pretty clear the lease payments were in the computer hardware account. But in some of these others, lease payments are coming out of various supplies accounts and other types of accounts. It's kind of hard to find where the lease payment is.
Okay, so there's not necessarily a specific line item for each one of these things that are not signed? Okay, and that's kind of what I mean by off-the-books and what I would be doing without my wife knowing. So back of the envelope numbers here, I'm looking, going back to two thousand and four, anywhere, and it's sort of just based on, sort of transposing these other numbers moving backwards, anywhere between two to two-point-seven million dollars that we're talking about. And that's just for the HP lease and then the other things that are added on there. I'm looking at, if I figure this correctly, at over a hundred thousand dollars in interest payments that were actually being made. Those interest payments, from what I'm understanding, were never separated out in various audits or the budgets. Member town assessments are being affected by those payments. So it becomes like, sort of like a undisclosed encumbrance of member town assessments, if I'm understanding this correctly?
Yeah, so for accounting purposes, a capital lease is set up like a loan instrument or a debt, like your bonds are, so that, you know, basically you have a payment for principal and you have a payment for interest. So the total lease liability is set up as a liability. And then each year, part of it goes to the payment of principal and part of it goes to the payment of interest. In this particular case, all you saw was the lease payment, which is a combination of, effectively, what is the combination of principal and interest?
Okay. The fact that these things, I mean, I guess my, where I'm going with some of this is, some of this stuff is off-books and so forth. And to me, and if I'm understanding you correctly, they're loans, not necessarily, we're calling, like, for instance, HP is a loan. It's essentially a credit card. We're calling it a lease. But, and I don't know, maybe that's what you guys are going to talk about later, but where I'm going with this is, does this affect our bond rating and so forth? You know, I mean, if, does it play anything with bond for whether it's undisclosed debt or whether it's disclosed? I don't know how this works, John, and so I'm just curious.
I think that the materiality level of this would not rise to the type of thing that would cause a bonding company to, I mean, a rating company to change your rating.
Good.
You know, if it was in the millions of dollars, yes. Compared to your overall financial picture and, you know, you have some pretty healthy surpluses and you do have a healthy financial picture, I don't think that these omitted disclosures would affect the money.
So I just have a quick question about these, what is actually purchased? If, like, the mowers, which are in excess of, you know, fifteen, eighteen thousand dollars, are we getting depreciation on those? I mean, I don't see how...
Pat has an answer, but...
Yes, I have the answer for that.
Okay.
Yes, we are.
We are. So we own them, we have the titles for them, and we, they are on our books as equipment that then is part of the entire process for...
Right, okay.
You know, I guess my last comment on that is that, and the other part of this that is just a project, I mean, I understand the HP leases because they were initiated at a time where the school was in deficit problems and had money problems and, you know, probably a real need for upgrades in computer systems and this was the way to do that. But the fact of the matter is, I mean, an eighteen thousand dollar mower taken out as a debt instrument makes no sense to me. And the same thing with a thirty thousand dollar, you know, I mean, ending every single year would anywhere between a half a million and a million dollar surplus. And, you know, why was there a need to do, to do these kinds of debt instruments?
Well, we came out of receivership, I believe, in two thousand and eight, as it is anyway, so that model may have wanted to change back at that point in time.
Lynn, just quickly, back to the mowers. I don't understand, we've got a promise agreement to Clinton Savings Bank, but we don't know who the vendor is. And supposedly, the money was put into the district bank account, but we can't find evidence that it was ever deposited. So we actually pay for this thing twice?
I don't think so. I think that the bank paid the vendor and then you're repaying the bank.
Shouldn't there be some evidence of the vendor?
There certainly should be, yeah.
Or evidence that he did get it? At least from the bank.
Yeah, that whole transaction should have gone through the books.
Well, admit, no, but I would think that you could just call the bank up and they could tell you who the vendor is. They must know who the money went to.
Yeah, we're just conferring about whether we know where the mowers came from, and I don't remember off the top of my head if we saw that.
And I know, Pat, yourself, I don't know, but...
I think they came from John Deere.
Kathy, just to be clear, in the school budget, nothing should be off-books.
Sorry, thank you, Kathy. So I'm going to go back to the HP leases because we also have a technology budget which we use. This is in addition to the technology budget. So we're looking at, since two thousand and four, quite literally, million, quite a sum of money in equipment and possibly services. But do we have, go back to two thousand and four, can we account for all the equipment that came in the door and to make sure that that was, I mean, was that, did we do a disposition of surplus when we, when we go rid of these various machines since two thousand and four?
Well, I know we did a really hefty one this summer. Like, it was like probably three or four inches thick.
Of the computers for the technology department?
Technology stuff, that we did clear a surplus, yes.
Can we, as a school committee, can we take a look at that?
Sure, of course.
Okay, I think that would be a great thing. Thank you.
Any more questions? Okay. Nan's going to come back, Nan and Carrie will come back to this, so we'll have more discussion on it, but let John continue on to specialized...
Special education costs, I've seen significant escalation in recent years, and I would say that's very consistent with school districts throughout Massachusetts. In fact, I have been a number of times called into districts because of deficits created by special education costs. So I will certainly have to congratulate you in your budgeting process that you had significant increases from fourteen to fifteen to sixteen, anticipating increases in special education costs. So, you know, talk a little bit in here, I show you the total gross costs and then the offsets and then that. Also, in two thousand and fifteen, there was emergency relief because the emergency relief is if you, if you, if your cost increased more than, what, twenty-five percent from previous year, they consider that extraordinary and provide you with emergency relief. They did. That helped you out in two thousand and fifteen by two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand. So costs are a combination of additional placements and the cost of placements increasing. So like, when you see the placements here in two thousand and fourteen, and these are just out-of-district, not collaboratives, but the out-of-district placements, there were sixteen in two thousand and fourteen, then going into fifteen, it was twenty-three-point-six. So that's a pretty healthy increase. Going from fifteen to sixteen, two-four, twenty-three-point-six to twenty-four, so there, it's not as much if they were additional placements. But what happened is there was a placement in fifteen that was only part of the year that came in for all of sixteen. So that was part of it. And as I say, there are just placement costs have increased significantly. So it's a combination of both. So we looked at the two thousand and seventeen budget, just because of the large increases, the increase in the special education budget wasn't that much in two thousand and seventeen, only two-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand. However, there's a decrease in transportation line, which we had indicated earlier in the report, the transportation account has had pretty substantial surpluses for several years. So in your two thousand and seventeen budget, transportation costs were budgeted, went down. And then the budget for the out-of-district tuition increase. So my belief is, looking at, unless you have unexpected placements, you never know, you should be okay for seventeen. The other thing I looked at is prepaid tuitions. And, you know, prepaid tuitions are a provision in master and our laws that allows you to, if you have some extra money, to prepay tuition to collaboratives going into the next year. And it's a way of setting up kind of a reserve or a buffer to help you out. And so, you know, what we looked at is, you know, what was the pattern? So in fourteen, there was three-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand, in fifteen, that went down to two-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand. That makes sense because you had that large increase in two thousand and fifteen and that was, you know, outside of the extraordinary relief, you didn't put as much money aside during fifteen for sixteen. And then sixteen going in seventeen went back up a little bit to three-hundred-and-four-thousand. So, you know, again, I, you know, that's something other districts do, master and our law permits, and I certainly don't see evidence of abuse of that. So recommendations, I think other recommendations in this report related to budget monitoring, all the other things that are going to help you monitor, special education costs. But also, the special education office can periodically provide administration. There's spreadsheets that, you know, show the number of places, not the names of the students, but the number of placements, where they are and what the costs are, all broken out. And I think if that, that, I did one of those, which has been shared with administration, it's not going to be shared publicly, but, you know, we can have that, you know, shared, which will help administration and monitoring and projecting, you know, if you do those quarterly projections I was talking about, that certainly would be helpful in looking at. Questions?
Are we, I'm offset with that section, Lynn's got a question.
Would you recommend that listing for other placements as well?
I'm sorry?
Would you recommend the listing, the number and location of placements? Would you recommend that for other placements as well, not just specialized? Such as charter schools and school choice?
Out of district.
Yeah, I haven't seen that, don't, I won't say it.
It wouldn't help at all?
I've not seen it, and it's not something I've produced.
Any other questions on this section?
Student activity funds, just pretty simple, we did have, in two thousand and fourteen, DESI came out with the new audit guidelines for student activity funds. Master and our laws always required that student activity funds be audited annually based on the DESI Audit Guide. DESI didn't have an audit guide and nobody was doing that annually, so there continued to be substantial problems. And so the Audit Guide was produced and substantially changed the way... And so, the Audit Guide was produced and substantially changed the way student activity funds have to be monitored and audited. So, what they set up is a process whereby you have to be audited every year because that's what they want. But what they say is, once every three years, you have to have it done by an outside CPA firm. The intervening years, you can have it done internally and it turns out that Masbo's doing them, a couple of other retired finance business managers are out doing them. And, and so, you know, there, if you don't have anybody internally that's independent and outside of the student activity fund process, you can do them internally, but others. And there are some, some districts that just said, we're gonna have them audited by an outside firm every year, anyway, that's just my knowledge. So, those choices are yours, but you did have yours audited in two thousand and fifteen by your outside audit firm. They had noted that, they not only audited fifteen, but they were looking at what you were doing at sixteen, which is the period where they were here doing the audit. So they had noted that some things had already been upgraded in sixteen that weren't in place in fifteen, and so they note that in the report, and I note those upgrades. But they indicate that, you know, there are still some things that need to be done, you know, district policy indicates inactive account should be closed after three years, but there's still a lot of inactive accounts. And then, school committee policies need to be upgraded to meet the recommendations in the DESI Audit Guide. That happened everywhere because it was the Audit Guide for the first time. That's a, school committee has to have policies on all these things along the list, and most didn't. So, policies being upgraded, so that's something that needs to be done. So, you know, incremental recommendations of the audit, the two thousand and fifteen audit, and then, you know, schedule, you gotta have two thousand and sixteen audited internally or externally, seventeen's gonna be audited internally or externally. You wouldn't need to have an outside CPA firm until eighteen. So, but be sure that you're getting, you know, that they are audited every year.
Questions on this, Jennifer?
So the ones that need to be audited annually are only over twenty-five thousand dollars? And there isn't a schedule on these, is there?
There is not.
Okay. But the ones under twenty-five thousand would be in the three-year audit? Thank you.
John, I'm interested if you can provide clarification on class accounts at the high school. For instance, we've had some, and what I mean for clarification is, class graduates, they still have five or six thousand dollars left in their account. That account sits basically on the books for a couple of years, two, three years, whatever. In some cases, I think we had more than that, they were sitting there. And then they eventually get rolled into the, I guess, the general student activities fund is where they ended up, I'm not positive. But, my understanding is DESI requires that we reach out and do all due diligence to be able to get in touch with class officers or representatives of those particular classes because those are their funds, their money, to find out how they wanna, you know, dispose of that money. Were you able to find that there were any records that we had actually done that through the process?
For the student activity accounts, I will add on Powell's report, what I will say is that the class accounts is, that money belongs to that class. They go, in the absence of them directing something else, the money goes with them. And I know when I tell that to principals, they get horrified. Are you telling me I gotta write a forty thousand dollar check to this high school student? Yes, you do. So it's their money, it goes with them. It's not unusual to approach that class and say, you know, would you like to do something, give us a gift, or would you like to do something else with it? And, and they can vote to do that. But the rule is the money goes with them.
So you have a lot of situations like that?
I don't know that you have a lot, I don't know...
There were, going back to, I think, twenty fourteen, twenty thirteen, whatever, there were a handful of class accounts for...
Those are recent years, they should be...
A substantial amount of money. I wanna say it probably came out to upwards of twenty to thirty thousand dollars that were outstanding that ended up getting rolled. So...
I mean, I, to this day, I still have schools that have class accounts going back into two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven.
Just so, I just wanted to, you know, make a comment on this. The, there are quite a few registered letters that went out to these class officers trying to do that.
Yeah.
Stephanie Hilliger made a real conscious effort to try to contact these people, and she has a folder full of those letters that she can show you, that in some cases, if there's still money left on the books, that's the only reason why, nobody has responded yet.
After a period of time, if you cannot locate and search the, and find who goes through the school committee, would be able to direct how, how that would be resolved.
I'm gonna add one quick thing, just on policies, and then while, while filling you in on this, we're gonna transition over to Nan in a minute. So, any of your other questions that you were graciously holding off, we're gonna jump in on them. Dorothy Presser, our Mass Association of School Committee's rep, called me yesterday to let me know, and I asked her to contact you, Susan, that the policy, all the policies in Section A and all the policies in Section B, they've completed their work, so they're shuttling those over to you folks in policy. But, and it was yesterday afternoon that she called, which was kind of fortuitous. I mentioned that the audit had come and that we may need to fast track the finance policies. So, finance and policy need to, you guys could go through this and identify those policies, Dorothy, so that they will be waiting for us to provide them, because there's a lot of areas in here, and policies in here that John's recommending that we need to kind of jump on quick. So, just so you know, she's, she said if you guys wanna fast track, which I think we probably do, so work with the finance group and guys get going. Thank you, don't leave yet. Don't you leave yet? Okay, you can sit over there if you want. Yeah, run! John, thank you so much, thank you for your work. Does anybody have any questions for John before Nan and Carrie begin?
So, does he gotta come back for further questions?
I think, I think so. I think, I'm gonna have to ask you folks about asking John, because there's so much data here and it's so rich, and we've only had a day and a half, and I know you wanna dig through these. John will be available to come back at our next meeting, which is the eighteenth of January. In order to do that, there is a fee associated with it. So I would need you folks to approve a twelve hundred dollar spend. Let me put this into context. When we first started this journey, the cost for the forensic audit was forty thousand dollars. When John found out that we had already done the Masbo review, which kind of starts to provide somewhat of a roadmap, so that it saves him a little bit of time, he indicated that the cost was twenty-five thousand, which is what we voted on. That was typically gonna be about a two-month effort, we're now into six months, and John's been able to maintain the expense for us. I wanna keep that perspective, but I also think that there are gonna be questions that you folks have. I think we're gonna have to open up questions to community members, because I don't think I'm qualified, and I don't know that any of us are qualified to answer those questions. So I would like to ask the committee to consider bringing John back on the January eighteenth meeting with a price set at twelve hundred dollars.
Second.
Second, all right, conversation...
We know where that's coming from?
Pardon?
We've identified where the money is coming from?
Have you? Cat, have you?
Since we're talking about budgets, right?
Absolutely.
I'm gonna talk to Pat, you know, to be honest with you, again, you've heard John say that our accounts are kind of like this. I mean, I don't think that we can sit here tonight and say, I mean, we could say, yes, it's gonna come out of legal expenditures. We couldn't do that, or, no, I'm just saying, we can identify any account and say it will come out of there. I would rather just say, I know that we have the money, I know that we have the money to do this. I wouldn't even blink at this, honestly. I think you need to do it.
Okay. Neil?
Can I ask John one final question?
Well, we're in the middle, let's wrap this up.
That circle back thing that I was talking about earlier.
Yeah, but let's wrap this up first. Nicole had a comment.
No, that was gonna be my question, just per what the audit just said, as far as us knowing what line item things are coming out.
Okay, all right. And Cathy, you have a question?
No, I just wanted to say that if we are opening up to the community and extending our citizens' comments section, in addition to our questions, being able to have John here to answer expertly and accurately, I think is important. So I'm in favor.
All right. Any more conversation, and if not, all those in favor? All those opposed? Nicole, it passes. Thank you all. John, thank you so much, you're on dead. Okay. Nan O'Neil, and thank you for this paperweight.
So listen, let me tell you what you had and how we're going to succinctly go through this. Basically, the bulk of the documents represent the lease and loan agreements that John referenced, that we talked about in that section. So to the extent that you wanna have them as references or access them, that's, that's what's there, that's the backup of what we're gonna take you through. We gave you each a copy of the PowerPoint, we've got twelve or thirteen slides here that will take you through our legal opinion, which is summarized in this cover letter here. So you can, you can read the letter after we go through the PowerPoint this evening. If, once, once we take you through this, it'll give you a clear understanding of what we're talking about with respect to these financial transactions, okay? I'll turn it over to Carrie and lead you through here.
So what we're drilling down into is the lease and loan section of John's report through the legal framework for how to understand what happened with those documents and what needs to be done going forward.
Can I do something here?
Nope, I'm good, I got, I got the clicker. Yeah? So, Chapter seventy-one governs public schools in Massachusetts, as I'm sure you're all aware of, and it has specific provisions related to regional school districts and how you can enter into leases and loan agreements. For leases, it says, a regional school district can enter into a lease for not more than five years to purchase equipment for educational purposes. It is not explicit on who, what body or person can physically sign a lease. Our interpretation is that, as a general matter, all power of regional school district is vested in the school committee unless it says otherwise. So our, our perspective is that the school committee, unless explicitly stated otherwise, is the body with the ability to approve entering into a lease agreement, or frankly, any other kind of contract. What I have seen in a lot of school districts is a policy by the school committee, so the school committee isn't, you know, approving every hundred dollar invoice, that it delegates to the superintendent or his or her designated, up to a dollar threshold amount. John mentioned, say, five thousand dollars, that contracts under that amount don't need to go to the school committee, but anything above that amount does need to go to the school committee for approval. Loans, Chapter seventy-one is very explicit about what needs to happen and when. There's two options for getting a loan approved as a regional school district. The first one is Chapter seventy-one, Section sixteen D, sixteen paragraph D, there's also a sixteen D just to make it more convenient. But, so, Section sixteen, paragraph D says that to authorize the debt by regional school committee or the borrowing of money by regional school district, the school committee has to vote to approve the debt. At that point, notice of the vote that the debt has been approved by the school committee needs to be sent by the district to each of the member towns. At that point, the member towns have sixty days where the boards of selectmen can decide to hold a town meeting and have everybody vote on the debt, or they can decide to do nothing. And if they do nothing, then after sixty days, the borrowing is deemed approved. The school district can't go ahead with executing the loan until the sixty days has passed.
We just went through this with Minute N.
What's that?
We just went through sixteen N with Minute N.
Oh, yes. Right, so sixteen, sixteen N is the other way to do it, which is that, again, the first step is always the school committee has to vote to authorize the debt. The other option, besides giving the member towns sixty days to decide to do something or not, is the district can go ahead and affirmatively schedule a district-wide election so that, you know, all voters of all the member towns have a chance to weigh in on approving the debt. The majority of the people actually voting, so not all registered voters, but the majority of people who show up for that election and vote need to approve the debt in order for the debt to go through under sixteen N.
You know, before, before Carrie gets into the specifics, I wanna direct your attention to Exhibit A of the opinion. There's a chart which basically summarizes all of these documents that we're talking about. So, if you never wanna look at the documents given you, they're fairly summarized in that chart, and that might be good to refer to as we go through these PowerPoints.
Right, so it just has, the chart has basic information, you know, what was purchased, when was the document signed, who signed it, what are the terms, and to the extent that we could figure it out, what are the outstanding liabilities, which, that's gonna come into play when we get to the end about what do we do next. So the first notes that are discussed are the Clinton Savings Bank loans, which, as John said, for certain of these items that we'll get into later, they're called leases, they don't necessarily function the way that I consider operating leases to function. The Clinton Savings Bank loans are clear, they are loans. They, they say they are loans, there's no, there's no pretending to be a lease or otherwise. There are two, one was for a Chevy Silverado truck that was executed in two thousand and thirteen. Going through school committee minutes for that time period, I've found no evidence that the loan documents had been brought to the school committee for approval. Therefore, unsurprisingly, then, they were, you know, the loan was not sent to the, by the district to the member towns because the school committee had never, again, I found no evidence that the school committee had ever approved it to begin with. The second Clinton Savings Bank loan from two thousand and fifteen, it was a three-year loan, this is one for the two mowers, for eighteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars. That one, the loan, was brought to the school committee for approval. So the school committee did, in some capacity, review that loan and approve the payment of the mowers over the three-year period. The district did not send it to the member towns, as should have happened, again, either under sixteen D by sending to them within sixty days, or under sixteen N affirmatively scheduling a district-wide election.
Right, I think in conclusion, with respect to the Clinton Savings Bank loans, they weren't entered into in compliance with Chapter seventy-one, either Section sixteen D or sixteen N, they weren't compliant with Chapter seventy-one. And with respect to the mowers, it's because they didn't go to the member towns, and with respect to the truck, it's because neither did the school committee approve, nor did they go to the member towns. So, that's, you know, it's, Chapter seventy-one's not equivocal, that you need to follow sixteen D or sixteen N when you take out a loan.
So next up, and this is the biggest, this is tab H in your, in your handout, you don't need to read the whole thing, but this is the HP Master Lease Agreement, which was first entered into in two thousand and four and has been going on in some capacity ever since, which is why that's a giant document, because there are new schedules for every year. Initially, and this is interesting, the initial agreement from two thousand and four was actually for the purchase of HP and Compaq, which is owned by HP, computer equipment. So, the original agreement looked a lot more like a lease than, I will discuss the later parts of the agreement did. In our view, it still should have gone to the school committee because I've, you know, there's no evidence that anyone but the school committee has authorized to enter a lease for the district. But it does not appear, again, reviewing the school committee minutes for that time period, it doesn't appear that this ever came to the school committee, and it should have. The initial two thousand and four agreement was for a three-year term on the principal of four hundred and two thousand dollars, which is a pretty big expenditure. Again, as John mentioned, the financial state of the district in that time period, if that's equipment you needed and you simply didn't have that kind of money in the fund, in your reserves or in your budget, this is one way to handle that, and that's what happened in two thousand and four.
And I will say, the other, one other point with respect to two thousand and four, even though it, what happened was termed a lease agreement and looked more, maybe on the surface like a lease agreement, HP did not hold any interest or title... a lease agreement, HP did not hold any interest or title in any of the equipment, and the district owned the equipment, and there was no payout amount at the end, either nominal or non-nominal.
Right.
So, HP didn't hold a security interest in this, so this was, you know, this was effectively equipment that was purchased by the district in 2004.
Right. But, again, because it was HP equipment and because the agreement was with HP, it certainly looked a lot more like a lease, but we would say functionally, you know, the way a lease is supposed to work is you pay for the value of the time that you're using the item, and after a three-year period, you either give it back, or you pay the remaining fair market value of the item. And in this case, at the end of the loan, at the three-year term, you don't pay anything, and the presumption is that this computer equipment had at least some value at the end of three years, therefore, it wasn't a real lease, otherwise you would have had to either get it back or pay the residual value of the equipment, which didn't. Subsequent to the initial agreement, and it's, the documentation, we went back to HP and we kept getting more documents from them, depending on how we asked the questions, so, at some point, I can't tell you exactly when, instead of it being for a purchase of HP Compaq equipment, it became this vessel where HP would give the money to, at first, Bank of New York, and then Deutsche Bank, who created an escrow account. So, essentially, there'd be a schedule at the beginning of the year, where it'd be, you know, "We need three hundred thousand dollars worth of equipment." HP would put that three hundred thousand dollars into an account, an escrow account, again, the first it was Bank of New York and then Deutsche Bank, and then the school district, as it purchased the equipment, would send the invoices, you know, basically have the invoices charged against the escrow account. And, which is, again, if the first version functioned more like a loan than a lease, this certainly does, where, you know, the HP essentially had nothing to do with the equipment, the equipment was purchased directly from all kinds of different vendors, HP set up the financing instrument with the escrow account. Each fiscal year, there'd be a new schedule that was prepared with a dollar amount representing the equipment that the district beaded for that fiscal year. The money would be put into account, and again, it was always a new three-year term. So, this agreement kept going on over a number of years and still continues today. I believe that the last schedule was signed in 2015, so it hasn't, it's not still being used, but their residual, you know, the tail end of the previous three-year obligations are still in place. This one's confusing, so I'm gonna pause to see if people have specific questions about HP.
Any questions yet, Nicole?
Okay.
Neil?
So, what you're talking about is an Evergreen lease, basically.
But, it was executed each year.
It was executed each year, so it was, you know, at least they kept being renewed every year. I wouldn't call it Evergreen, because there had to be an affirmative action by the district to continue it each year.
Okay. And, do you happen to know offhand how many school districts use this kind of model of HP?
I do not.
Like Massachusetts.
Yeah, I believe, like, we called the company earlier this summer, and Pat, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe there are only two across the country right now, we were one of two.
One of two in the country.
Yeah.
We're the only one in Massachusetts.
And we are the only one in Massachusetts, I think the other one was Ohio, if I remember serving right.
Carolina.
Okay, thank you.
So, how do we account for, so we have the technology budget, we have this budget, I guess it's a budget?
Computer hardware.
And then we have the computer hardware budget. So, how do we keep track of technology?
Well, they're not gonna.
I was gonna say, that's not a legal question, so I'm.
No, that's not, yeah, but I mean, just, it's a lot of money, because that's a million dollars a year, because if you keep doing three hundred thousand dollars, and you, that's a lot of money.
That's why we want to take a look at the surplus stuff and all that.
And that's also why Neil used the comment earlier, really, it's not just three hundred thousand, it starts to add up to be like seven million or whatever it is.
Per year?
No. Probably actively over the lifetime.
And that's just for this one? That's just for the HP that came?
The HP, yes. The HP is the monster agreement among all these agreements.
So, Lynn, to answer your question, we're budgeting for fiscal year 2016, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars for computer hardware, so basically, that's the lease payment for that year, for the three leases that were existing in that particular year.
Is that what that is?
Yeah. So, it's a rolling amount, it turns out to be more than three hundred thousand a year, about a hundred thousand a year for each of the three surviving leases as they expire.
Okay, so for the Clinton Savings Bank, we know what didn't happen that should have happened.
Right.
Is there something that didn't happen that should have happened with this one?
I would, I would say that, again, this, once this became an escrow agreement, even if it says the word lease on it, to me, this is functioning as a debt for the district, and I would say it certainly should have gone to the school committee, as we've talked about. I believe that it also should have gone to the member towns under 16D or 16N. Again, it's not.
Annually?
Yeah.
Yeah, anytime a new schedule was signed with a new debt obligation, it should have. One thing I didn't mention earlier is that, as usual, Mass. General Laws is, you know, both helpful and not, leases, the term lease is not defined in that section of Mass. General Laws, so it's unclear what they, what Mass. General Laws intends to be a lease versus a loan. And, the way that we look at it is functionally, again, particularly in the case of HP, you can call it whatever you want to, but it was functioning as a loan instrument, as debt for the district, and as such, we believe that it would have been the prudent course of action to go to the member towns and tell them, "The district is, you know, signing on for this amount of debt for the next three years, and you've got 60 days to either disapprove it or let us go ahead and do it."
And, you know, and said another way, the hallmarks of a lease, if you have a lease, is that you're, you don't own it, and if you do want to own it, at the end of the term of the lease, you're paying the fair market value. And so, that's, so when you look at, you know, at the end of these leases, whether we're talking about the computer equipment in HP, and some of the other leases that we're gonna talk about momentarily, you know, the district owned it at the end, and a dollar a nominal value buyout doesn't represent fair market value. Even if you, you know, you look at a truck after four years, you know, presumably, it's worth more than a dollar. Can I tell you what it is worth? No, but, you know, just think about leasing your own cars, if you've done that, right? At the end of it, there's a fair market value buy, payout if you want to buy it. So, that's why when you look at, you know, whether these, we're really analyzing from a legal perspective, are these debt instruments or leases? And obviously, Section 16 tells us what to do with leases, but where these, you know, in some ways, you have to look beyond the label and say, are these functioning like loans? You know, where we're basically paying out, I think the generally accepted accounting principle is if you pay out ninety percent over the course of the payment period, you know, that represents a, you're financing it, and it's a, you know, it's, that's a loan or debt.
So, they're functioning like loans without the moniker.
Like a line of credit.
Yeah. So, that's what you're saying, is they're loans without the technical legal term of loan.
Right.
Which is different from, so that's gonna be confusing for people.
Yeah. I mean, it is confusing, except it would be helpful if Mass. General Laws were more specific about what it means by lease.
Well, we don't want to be the first, so.
Can I, just overly simplistic analogy, maybe, and maybe I'm wrong, so correct me, but it's kind of like having a home equity line of credit. So, you get this line of credit that exists, and for some reason, everything you purchase off this line of credit is being called a lease or a leased item.
You're talking about the HP?
Yes.
I was gonna say, I wouldn't characterize the other, I wouldn't characterize the other leases that way.
No, 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 I'm talking about the HP.
HP.
Like a line of credit?
I think, I would say a little bit different. I would say HP is like, if you were doing improvements on your house every year, and you took out a line of credit for, okay, I need thirty thousand dollars for a new roof, so I'm doing, I'm taking out a line of credit, but it's tied to something that I know I want to buy, as opposed to, I'm taking money out of my house to spend on a vacation. Do you see what I'm saying?
See the worst, okay.
No, I'm saying it's not, it's not.
It's not a bad vacation.
Okay, good, alright, it's not.
It was taken out to build the roof.
Yeah, that's not, yeah.
Right, you're taking it out for something related to the house, and the amount you're taking out is directly tied to what you know you need to spend on.
Right, yeah, totally. Thank you.
Sure.
Lynn, is it reasonable to assume that we're a public forum, so we don't have to notify the public officials when we make a capital purchase?
You need to be louder, because I don't think I heard that.
Well, is it reasonable to assume that we're a public forum? Right? So, is it the representative's responsibility to watch us, or do we have to say?
Are you talking about notifying the member towns? Yes. No, the Mass. General Laws is specific that notice has to be sent by the district to the member towns. They're not expected to follow along.
But, not for a purchase within our. What's the typical process for that?
It's a letter.
Yeah, a letter, a letter is sent to the board of selectmen, usually by administration, to the, you know, someone in administration has the job that, to send a letter to the board of selectmen, saying, this, you know, the school committee has authorized this debt, you have 60 days to act or not.
And then you reference the general Mass. General Law.
Right.
And it goes.
And then, again, whether you do 16D or 16N, either you say, "We're gonna be holding a district-wide election," or you say, "This is your 60-day notice, and, you know, we'll wait to hear from you."
But, we have to send.
Yes.
All right. Jen, prefer.
But, if it's just a straight capital purchase out of our budget, we don't have to do that, it's only if we're borrowing.
Only if you're borrowing money.
Right.
And again, if it's a lease, you don't have to do that either, and that's where some of these get a little sticky.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. Wells Fargo, so, this was for the purchase of a van that was a forty-six thousand dollar van. This is deemed a lease, I believe it was called a lease purchase agreement, so it's called a lease, it looks like a lease. At the end of the three-year term, there was a dollar payoff, and, you know, having owned some sketchy cars earlier in my life, when I sold them for scrap, they were worth more than, I got more than a dollar for it, so it's unlikely that a dollar represented the true market value of a three-year-old van. This agreement was approved by the school committee, so again, if it were just a lease, that's all that would have needed to have happened. If, as we view, in substance, it functioned more like loan, the prudent course of action would have been to send it to the member towns, so that they were aware of it and they could choose to take action or not within the 60-day period.
The estimated payoff, man, is that your estimate of what was?
Uh, that was Pat's, I think. Did you do the estimated, or?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I got that number from Pat, it's not, I am not.
Thank you.
I am a lawyer, not accountant.
Typical lease terms, over X number of miles, and you have to pay X number of cents per mile, you know, like we would have.
No, no, that wasn't, these, this was on state contract.
Okay.
Right, it wasn't like a typical car lease, it was, you know, you make these payments over this period, and then for a dollar, you can own this truck, or, except that you own the truck all along, it was for a dollar, you've committed, you know, you've satisfied your obligations.
Thank you.
These two are lumped together, because they're pretty similar, this is the John Deere Agreement, which again, is termed a lease, and leasing innovation, Deere was for a tractor and some attachments, leasing innovations was for some finance software. They both had five-year terms, which again, as we talked about, leases can go up to five years, if it is truly a lease. However, neither of these were approved by the school committee, and, again, absent a policy otherwise, I would say that the school committee, the school committee should approve every lease signed by the district. These weren't sent to the member towns, if they are considered leases, they wouldn't need to be, the way these function, again, like the Wells Fargo Agreement, there is either, I believe they both had a dollar payout at the end, or a no payout. So, they function as a loan, rather than as I would think of an operating lease.
Do you know why there were certifications for some, but not all of these?
Not all lenders ask for certifications by attorney or by, yeah, it's not required by law to ask for a certification, so, some of them had them because the lender asked for it, and the ones that didn't, I'm presuming the lender didn't ask for it.
And you will say too, some of those certifications are the lending institution's forms.
Right.
Which were just signed by the attorney, so it wasn't anything, as Carrie mentioned, it's just because the lenders or financing entities are requiring it.
Right, exactly, it's just part of the paperwork, and, you know, in some cases, they requested an attorney's certificate, which most of the time was a form, I think in one case, it was a letter on letterhead saying, you know, this appears to be a transaction that was authorized. So, those are all the agreements that are at issue, we've identified what the potential issues are, pretty much none of them, except possibly the Wells Fargo, had all of the aspects that we would like to see in terms of compliance of Mass. General Laws. So, the question is, what do you do now? We have this equipment in the district, it's being used, to my knowledge, and you have an obligation to pay for it, but the obligation wasn't entered into in full compliance with Mass. General Laws. We've got a couple of options of ways to rectify this and bring everything into compliance. The first option, which is not gonna be the one I recommend, but, the obvious option would be, we'll do new agreements with everybody, and the school committee has to approve the agreements, and the ones that are loans, which are most of them, should go to the member towns for authorization, whether through 16D or 16N. That's complicated, and it's a lot of paperwork, and it's continuing a practice that I believe shouldn't have happened to begin with. So, that's not what we recommend, in terms of, you know, how to, like I said, how to bring things into compliance. Option two, if it's possible, you can amend to your current budget, with a two-thirds vote of the school committee, to pay the balances on the leases and the loans, as long as the total budget number doesn't get higher. So, as long as you have money in accounts that you can approve to move into a line item to pay for the, to pay off these obligations, as long as the total budget doesn't get higher, and no member town's assessment gets higher, the school committee is able to do that with a two-thirds vote, and without going to the member towns. So, in terms of streamlining, you know, just getting everything the way it should be and moving on, that would be your best option.
How much are we talking about?
Look at the estimated payoffs.
It's gonna be just, just under two hundred thousand dollars is what it's going to be.
Total?
Yeah.
Even the HP loans?
Yeah, because the HP loans, lease as such.
Right.
Operated a little differently, and Pat, if I make a mistake in explaining this, I know you'll jump in, but the first year that you sign on, you pay, you make that first, like, a hundred and ten thousand dollar payment, and then, in this particular case, we made the hundred and ten thousand dollar payment last July 1st, I believe it was, and then this year's, we made it on the July 1st, which leaves us with one remaining payment. And so, it's about a hundred and eight, nine thousand in there, and then you've, some of your residuals, because you've been paying on these for several years now, you're left with smaller balances. So, for example, the Clinton Savings Bank, right now, is, the balance is just under fifty, just under sixty thousand dollars. The Wells Fargo is thirty-one thousand, the John Deere's twenty-five thousand. So, when you add these all up, you're just sitting under two hundred thousand dollars to clean it all up, if we follow option two.
Right.
Which is what, I would follow the lead that they're suggesting and make that commitment to clean it up this fiscal year.
In our view, if you have the money in your budget without, you know, obviously, stretching any budget item and putting anything into a deficit, this is the best way to move forward, satisfy these obligations. I mean, one thing I didn't list as an option, because I don't think it's an option you would want to take, is you could take the position that because these loans were not entered into in compliance with Mass. General Laws, the district isn't, doesn't need to abide by them, you could return the truck, and just say, "Sorry, you know, we're walking away from this." I wouldn't recommend that for a lot of reasons, I'm assuming all these vehicles and property are in use, and that you want to keep using them, and, just ethically, I don't think it's the best way to go, so, but I mention it, because it is an option. Option three is a version of option two, so if you want to, you can amend the current budget, even if it increases the total budget, and even if it increases the assessment of any member town. However, for the obvious reasons, that's more complicated, you not only need the two-thirds vote of the school committee, you also need to notify the member towns, and for this, for a budget amendment, they have forty-five days to disapprove, and if any town that's, whose assessment goes up, disapproves, they can essentially veto the whole thing, even if the other two towns approve it, if any town whose assessment went up, disapproves it, then you can't go forward. So, our hope is that there is enough money in the current budget, so that you don't need to increase assessments or increase the total budget.
Okay, so, just explain.
Sure.
If member towns vote, two-thirds of member towns must approve, and/or any member town whose assessment was approved.
Right.
If the assessment goes up, they have to approve it.
Yes, or they have to not disapprove it, it's, again, it's the thing where they've got forty-five days.
But, if they go through the, if they go through the process, and, say Lancaster holds a special town meeting and disapproves. If they go through the process and, say Lancaster holds a special town meeting and disapproves.
If Lancaster's assessment was going up and they disapproved-
Then that kills it.
Then that kills it. They essentially have a veto power, even if the two-thirds-
Okay.
Even if the two other towns-
Even if the two other towns approve it. Now, if Lancaster's assessment wasn't going up and the two other towns approved it, then it wouldn't matter if Lancaster voted it down because the two-thirds would prevail. That's why it's an and/or. It's sort of two separate.
Mass General law.
Yeah, Mass General law is always a pleasure. So, as I said, our recommendation is, if possible, we recommend proceeding with option two. Amend the current fiscal year budget with a two-thirds vote of the school committee to pay the balances. Move on. Don't engage in this kind of financing. Again, you know, there's obviously many other ways to do this. You make a long-term capital plan. You can bond things out. Taking out, as John said, taking out a three-year note on an $18,000 tractor when you have a $55 million budget is not, does not make fiscal sense. We also recommend, as John does, that the school committee considers enacting a policy making it clear for any contract, but particularly for leases, because it's not clear in Mass General laws, what leases, if any, can be signed by administration without going to school committee. Again, as John recommends, we would also recommend, and I have seen it in other school districts and in cities and towns, where it's a certain dollar amount, under, again, $5,000 or, you know, in large cities I've seen under $15,000, the executive can go ahead and sign a contract. Anything over that, not sort of legislative body. And that's what we would recommend here. Again, just to make things clear so that everybody understands who has the authority to do what. And we don't end up going forward with the school committee not being aware of commitments that have been made in this hazy gray area. And that's what we've got. So, questions?
So, we need to talk about these options, folks. And I know the first question is-
Can we?
Can we afford it? And with what we've heard tonight from John and Nan and Carrie, feels a little like the budget's on shifting sands because we can't nail things down. Okay, so before I go any further, thank you, John, Nan, and Carrie, for providing answers that we've been looking for in several areas. It's not comfortable. It's uncomfortable. We didn't, we didn't create this situation, but we are going to have to fix it. We're going to have to move things forward so that we can get this cleaned up, so that we can move forward with the work that we want to do. But we have got to make a decision. And we don't have to do it tonight, but we have to discuss it in order to do this relatively soon. How do we want to resolve based on the three options? And I know one of the first things you're going to say is, do we have the money?
So, we've talked about this and Pat and I certainly talked about it. I know we've talked with Carrie and Nan about it and with John. My recommendation as well would be to go with option number two. And, you know, what I'd like to do is take it, we've got a couple of ideas. We decided tonight that we would not make a commitment as to what lines, because I'm sure that that would be a question. What we, and we said, so we're being purposeful with that. What I would like to do is take our suggestions now back to the finance subcommittee and say, here's what we're thinking and here's how we can see our way of paying this. And I think it's the cleanest. I think it will just, in one fell swoop, clean the deck off for us. So, I'm strongly supporting that. We're happy to meet with finance committee next Wednesday morning and have this discussion with them as to some specifics.
So, if you, if you, and I'll get, oh, I will. If you folks meet on Wednesday, then you would be with the understanding that you'd be bringing a recommendation to the school committee on the 18th?
Right.
We have a meeting on the 18th as well. So, we can discuss it next Wednesday. We could then think about it, digest it. We could vote to approve it or whatever, recommend it to the school committee the following Wednesday morning and it can be on the agenda.
Okay.
Our recommendation.
So, what time is your meeting on Wednesday?
Eight, eight-thirty in the morning.
Okay.
I wondered if this is on the Wednesday.
It's needed.
Kath.
So, we meet next Wednesday.
Is there a reason why we wouldn't consider taking over E and D?
So, you can answer that. And then I'm nervous about E and D, but you can answer that.
Yeah. To be honest with you, I think you did a really nice job here in talking about the shifting of sands, you know. And I think philosophically, we need to talk, and I know that we'd spoken earlier, I'd spoken with Mr. Darcy about the fact that we need to have some philosophical discussion on this too. And we need also some philosophical, and I'm talking to the finance subcommittee first before it bubbles up, what E and D really looks like. And, you know, again, if we had longer, we could talk to John about what is a norm for E and D to look like for a regional school district our size and how should the money be used and how it has been used in the past. And so, I think that we need to, this is another gray area, I think, for Nishova, that we need to settle in and decide how E and D is being used. Is it an option though, Kathy? I would agree. I mean, it's an option. We've talked about it. It's not where we want to go though.
We also know that we need to discuss where E and D is coming from, where the surplus is coming from and how that is generated. I think that that's one-time funds, certain things you can't, you know, but consistent line items that are significantly overbudgeted that then go into E and D, I think we need to-
Yeah, and you know, to, just to follow that thread, like John has said that there are large surpluses. That's a dangerous mess. And I'm not, I respect it. I buy it. There are large surpluses. But then at the same time, what's, that's at the, as of, at the end of FY '16, which was June 30th, 2016, the massive amount of work that's gone on from the time Brooke walked in the door on July 1st with, you know, facilities issues and this and that, and we've had to add people because we've got people that are getting hurt and et cetera, et cetera. I just need to, I mean, and I don't know we're going to get the answer. What is that final surplus? If it is there, what does it look like?
And I think the other thing too, and one of the reasons why I'm going to spring from your idea of dangerous, I mean, because the other side of this is although there were some surpluses, you'll also see a fair number of lines. And I loved what John did in that first early section in here where he, I just, I, it took me a while to get my head wrapped around how this really worked on, you know, these early pages like five, six, seven, eight type thing where you show the deficits.
Right.
Because right now, you're talking about the surpluses, lest we forget that there were also lines in here like $80,000 deficit, $190,000. One was $205,000. So, I mean, these were not small deficits. So, let's make sure that we're balancing our discussion here.
Oh, absolutely. Nea?
And I'd like to ask John this if I could. John, after you've gone through this, do you see that there's a possibility that there could be other things that you have not come across that could be issues that we may have to adjust?
Absolutely. I mean, so much I can look at, so much I see. And some of this, you know, if it's off books, you don't know. So, there are some things that, I mean, is there a risk that other things may exist that I didn't come across? Absolutely.
All right. So, here's a question for Nan and Carrie. One of the things that helps us function is goodwill with our member communities.
Yes.
This information will not foster goodwill with our member communities.
John, I can't hear you. You guys speak.
This, this will not foster goodwill with our member communities that this, I mean, other than the fact that we're trying to fix this. So,
Right.
do our member communities have a recourse to hold the district liable for these debts that were entered into questionably?
Not obviously under Mass General laws.
Okay. So, if we can do this-
There's always some theory that people could advance, but there's no obvious-
So, if we can do this and we can show good faith that we are going to resolve this and have very strict policies to prevent it from happening in the future.
Exactly.
Okay.
That's, I mean, and that's why our recommendations are twofold. It's how to deal with the obligations that are on the table right now and how to enact policies going forward to stay out of this kind of area in the future.
Okay.
Well, and I think just visibility into the budget is going to help with that too, right?
Yeah, I was just, I think, yeah, I was just going to say too, it's not just policy. It's got to be practice too. And I think, again, Chairman Ross did a really nice job teeing it up this evening because that was one of the whole points for this particular exercise, is looking for best practices, you know. And I feel that in how he's illustrated so much of the work, I think really leads us down a nice pathway for relooking, like the offsets. It's a perfect example, you know. And/or all these transfers at the end of June, like, you know, he's not saying it's wrong. It's maybe just not the best way to do business. And so, that gives us the opportunity as new administrators into the district to look and say, you know what? And I will be the first to say, I absolutely agree with him, you know, particularly with the transfers at the end because he's absolutely right. If, and I'll go back to, you know, the custodial line is a perfect example of that. You know, we've had that discussion a number of times around the table with the personnel subcommittee. There's a perfect example where it was overspent time and again, you know. So, if it's overspent, let's just say, you know what, this is how much this money, this line should be costing us. And this is the number that we're going to start to put in play right now. So, I think that, I think that he's, the work that you've done, John, lays a beautiful roadwork for us moving forward. So, I think it's more than just policy. I think it's policy and I think it's practice. And I think it gives us the opportunity also to sit down and say philosophically, for example, what do we really think about technology? What do we really think about E and D? What do we really think about these things? And where do we stand as a school district on it?
Can I ask Nan and Carrie two questions? So, I guess the first one is, if we're talking about compliance, well, first of all, if we have something that is either a policy that contradicts Mass General law or a policy that doesn't exist, but there's Mass General law, I mean, do we default to Mass General law for things when they're-
If you don't have a policy?
If we don't have a policy and-
Right, right. And if you had a policy that was inconsistent with Mass General law, the law would trump the policy.
So, I'm hearing 16N and whatever that was on here, that's Mass General law. And that's would either a trump or would replace what isn't there now. Is that correct in that particular thing?
Yes. For, right, for a long reason.
So, when I see issues and you're saying compliant, that tells me that we're not in compliance and we're not in compliance with the law, which tells me what?
Which, which tells you, take Clinton Savings Bank, because that's the most black and white one, that those are non-compliant, said another way, illegal loans, that the loans are not, that, that, as Carrie mentioned, option four could be, the district could disavow those loans because they weren't legally entered into. And I think as a, you know, as a school district, what we're recommending is councils, look for a way to fix those. You don't want to walk away. I mean, there are obligations that the, that the school, some constitution of this committee incurred at some point. So, you got to fix it. I mean, that's-
We do have to fix it.
And other than the fiscal situation we're in, have we been put at risk by these non-compliant loans?
You know, I don't, as Carrie mentioned, somebody could make a theory, but in order to, you know, to demonstrate injury, someone claiming would have to show some harm or some injury. And the district has gotten the use and the value of this equipment. There's no indication that the interest rates or anything are excessive or absorbent in. So, you know, it's a, and, and I think without exception, the equipment was bought off the state bid list. That's so from a procurement perspective. It was, you know, that, that-
That was compliant.
Chapter 30B aspect of it was appropriate. That's actually addressed briefly in the letter. But, but I don't, I think ultimately what you're asking is, is there some exposure for the district based on this?
Yes.
I don't think, I don't think any significant exposure. I think, you know, to, to take steps to address it in good faith, to fix it, then you're stopping the, you know, someone like those with the loans and the trucks, you paid about half of it, you know, give or take, and you paid the rest of it.
But if there is something that we don't know about that we come across, then, I mean, so we can't say, or can we say for sure that there is no exposure?
I mean, we can never, we can never say that.
I'm only trying to because we see this and it's kind of willy-nilly everything and the way things have been done. So, I don't know if this is where it stops.
Well, you know what, you know what this committee can say? It's, and I think John's, I don't think anyone here can say we absolutely know everything or have seen everything. But, but what the committee has done has engaged in a good faith effort to employ the experts to make sure, to conduct an investigation, to make sure that it's aware of, you know, anything that it could be aware of. You know, in other words, you haven't just said, oh, we don't know, throw up our hands, what we don't know, you know, won't hurt us. You've started with Masbo and, you know, that led to a forensic audit. And I think that demonstrates that, you know, you recognize that there were issues. You employed outside consultative services to help you find those issues. He, you know, he found issues and concerns and now there's remedial steps being taken to fix them. And I think it just, you know, it's newer, should have known. And if there's no way he knew about it, you know, it would be a different story if finding some of these issues, you decided not to take action or considered the practice.
So, I'll ask the last question is, the district has incurred substantial costs in order to uncover these various things that have taken place. So, have we been damaged as a district?
Well, I mean, I think you have to determine whether you, you know, you look at that as a cost of being, you know, cost of running a school district. And certainly, if you hadn't done it, the risk and exposure going forward could just expand and be greater. So, yeah, you've incurred some costs and incurred some costs and, well, you know, based on the way things have done in the past. But it's, it's, they were costs that were necessary to, A, figure out if there were any issues and B, what steps you would take to remedy them. But that's, and so, you know what, and I don't mean to be flippant about this, but, you know, that's what every client always says about legal fees. Like, you know, we don't, we're not bringing any revenue into districts. And then perhaps you can say the same about accounting fees, but, you know, I think it's the cost of running a school district.
Well, not only that, but the, but the risk exposure that we had until we spent the money to bring John, and thank you very much, and to bring you folks in, is preventative. We literally could have found ourselves, if this had kept going, in some pretty sketchy situations as a district. So, I think the money that we've spent so far, I think it's going to exponentially return because we're now able, at least for what we know, right, at least for what we know, fix it, move on. I'm sure Brooke and Pat just shared another couple of things they found yesterday. Another, it's just, we're going to continue to do this. So, let's fix what we know because we're going to continue to find things that we need to fix. And that's part of the, of doing business too. I think at this point, we need to have you folks in finance talk. This discussion though, at the school committee level, needs to be extremely robust. So, whatever goes on in finance, bring it to us because the rest of the folks who are not in finance, this is a, this is a significant deal. And we will take your recommendations. Thank you very much for everything that you've done. Thank you, John. And I think for, and I thank the school committee for your patience. This has been a long road and for approving the spend to bring John back. Because what I'd like to do is, we're going to need time to look at the, we're going to need time to look at this material for the 18th. Bring your additional questions. However, given the context and the applicability of what we've found to all three member towns and the taxpayers in those towns, I'd like to open up the opportunity for the community to send their questions in. And they can send them to schoolcommittee@nrsd.net. And if you could, if you look at the, please look at the audit document. And Alita's going to put the report and Carrie and Nan's PowerPoint up on the website tonight, tomorrow morning? Tomorrow morning? Thank you. So that everyone can take a look at it. And then if you have questions, send them in to that mailbox. We'll collect them all up. We'll meet with John and Nan, try to categorize them so that we can get people's questions answered at the next school committee meeting. And then we'll, we'll broaden our public comments section significantly so that we can then answer some of those, as many questions as we possibly can get to. And we may even have time to take some live questions. And I think if we do that, because this budget, we're providing oversight as best we can, but we don't own this budget. It's owned by every single person that makes a contribution through their taxes in all three towns. And I think it's only fair to the community for them to have an opportunity to ask questions that they may have as well. Frankly, the school committee isn't going to be able to answer those questions because we're not the experts. because we're not the experts. So let's do that on the 18th. Okay? Neil?
You said Brooke, and you don't have to share this, but you said that you just have something else that you guys discovered? That's not another shoe ready to drop that's gonna cost more money?
No, it's not, but it's pretty much more of the same, to be honest with you, where something happened, and it was, again, it was off books. So it just never came through. It was, it was an insurance, an insurance claim that had come through, that we just, and it was a fluke that it was even uncovered. It wasn't that we were looking at, it just kind of came through. So for us, I think for Pat and I, it was just kind of more of the same.
Okay.
But there's no, there's no dollar situation involved here right now with the school committee. It's nothing like this situation here. And I actually already discussed it this morning with John.
Nan?
I, I'm a little confused, because it doesn't sound like, I mean, some non-compliance things that we can take care of by doing a few things. But is there, is there anything outstanding that we should be worried about? I mean, is there anything, I know that we talked about exposure, but... Is the, why are you here?
Because there's some loans that should never have been taken, that with, the way that they were, without following the proper channels, and we now have to resolve those.
But it almost sounds like they're, I mean, just.
Say it, it's okay. This is the time to do it, so get it out there, girl, you got 10 minutes. Not, not the whole 10 minutes, but you have got 10 minutes.
It's, it's an easy fix. And it's, it's like, okay, something happened, we got off the road a little bit, and we just have to tweak it, and we're back on, now we're reset.
If we spend a significant amount of money, we have to reexamine business practices, and that's not, you know, even Brooke's comment about E and D, like, that's not a one-year, one-year thing. These things are gonna take years.
And some of it too is gonna be weaning off. I mean, you know, lest we forget how that H P thing even started. You know, I think that was my second day on the job. And poor Pat and Sushi and I, and I remember refusing to sign the documents. This makes no sense. I mean, lest we forget some of this stuff, you know? And so what's gonna happen though then, is those purchases were made, and then that had to be, all of this is a weaning off process. The E and D, the money that's been circulating in and out of there, the E and D into the regular budget, and that, that stuff is gonna stop too. So you're absolutely right, there are a number of practices that have been put in place that we need to reexamine right now, and say, what makes sense? The offsets alone, shifting away from that model, is huge. So none of this is simple, I, I, I think that sometimes we, you know, there's a penchant to make things look easy or look simple, when in fact they're really, they're not simple.
Yeah, I don't.
Well, and right, and what I can say, Nan, is that the only reason it's an easy fix is because potentially the district has the fund. Because if, if, if there wasn't that sense, you know, that Carrie and I had, you know, talking with Brooke and John, if we didn't have the sense that there was a money there, you know, we would be saying something very different. And we'd be saying, you know what? You need to call up the, for example, Clinton Savings Bank and say, this is, you know, this, these loan documents are not valid, this is not a valid loan. We need to renegotiate something here, what do we need to do? Then we need to take this to the member towns. And that, you know, that's what those other options are saying. So, so it looks easy, I think, because you have the money. If you didn't, we, we, we wouldn't just say, okay, you know, well, what's done is done, we won't do it again in the future. I mean, from a legal perspective, we would be saying, you need, you need to fix this. And then what would happen if, if, you know, let's say we were able to negotiate, then we go to, you know, more favorable terms, for example. And then we do go to the member towns, and it's voted down. You know, then, then we're in a, then we're in a quandary, so to speak. And, and so what's the option there? Take the equipment and give it back? You know, so it's, it's, it wasn't, and also initially, I think Carrie sort of alluded to this, and I apologize against if I'm sounding defensive, but, but these documents were not available in the stack. I mean, it took weeks to, to, to get a complete set of, you know, what these loan documents were, and we're contacting the financial institutions and putting the pieces together, and in particular the H P, because you'll see there's, there's, you know, dozens of schedules that, and for some years, you know, we went to H P to get those schedules, and for some years they didn't have them, and there, you know, there's gaps here and there. So that, so first we had to compile and see what the picture was, and then we had to determine, okay, this says lease purchase agreement. This is really a lease, is it, you know, what's, what's really going on here? Okay, so it's, you know, it's functioning like a debt instrument, it's more like a loan. Here's, here's the procedure that wasn't followed. So it's, you know, there were, to get to this point where we're finally able to say, okay, we kind of have three categories. We have the loans, we have H P, which started off really as a lease, and then morphed into, uh, use, you know, as analogy, home equity, you know? You know, that, so that's a little bit different. And frankly, with the H P, I don't think this ever happened, but, but it appears once those, once those leases were renewed every year, H P would have deposited the funds irrespective of whether there was a particular list of computer equipment. And they were loaning the money, that's what it was, that's what they were doing. And then you have the other, the other lease agreements that really are capital leases. And, you know, capital leases are needed to, you know, from an accounting standpoint, John addressed the issues of off books and fixed asset schedule and the accounting principles. But then we looked at them under chapter 71, section 16, as loans, because they, they acted like loans. So that's, that's, that's why we're here.
Well, no, so basically your added value is, I'm understanding correctly, is determining what we're doing right, what we're doing wrong, basically. And then giving us the advice on how to proceed and fix it without doing anything illegal.
Right, okay. That too.
Because I would think that, you know, we could just be making the same mistakes that we have been doing.
Oh, I don't think so. I think, I think Nan said it best to me recently, where, you know, Pat's now, you know, you've got different people.
Yeah, we, and that, that's the thing, we're, we, there's, there's new administration here, there's new, you know, new people in new positions. And I think going forward, you know, in conjunction with new people, people getting continuous training, and I think, as Lorraine mentioned, the financial policies, the school committee policies around what can be executed and who can execute it, that's just gonna be critical going forward. Because, because, you know, there were, with respect to these leases, the Mass General laws doesn't define for these purposes what a lease is. So as a school committee, you know, you, and there are operating leases. You use a copier for three years, and then you don't keep the copier, you know, that type of thing. So whatever the threshold value is, think of something, like delegate to administration, they have the ability to enter into the lease for the copier. You don't want every copier coming before you.
Right.
But when we get into other things, and John alluded to this too, you know, like the Starcraft fan, well, is it really fiscally prudent to take a loan on that? Why wouldn't you just, you know? And I think that's, I mean, I didn't mean that though, but I think that has to be part of the underlying purpose of the general law, like to say, you know, to discourage debt instruments, where you can make a capital purchase. And, and, you know, as a matter of fact, that's what the auditor, you know, these are annual auditors, you know, I spoke with him briefly about this. And that's what he said, for example, about the truck. You know, we just thought, you know, we knew about the truck, we just thought they bought it.
Right.
You know, we didn't know they financed it. Why'd they finance it, you know, kind of thing? And I think that goes to the off-books nature of it, so.
Okay, wanna wrap it up, Neil?
I, I had.
Was anybody else, I'm sorry, don't hate.
Sorry, go back, yeah.
Just, Nicole, do you? Questions, comments? Susan, Kathy, John, Janice? All right, go ahead, thanks.
Sorry, I have to circle back, John. The full-day kindergarten, that, we don't have free kindergarten here. We pay for the second-half kindergarten. And I noticed that in your statement, the account has been somewhat depleted due to the use of $500,000 to offset salaries in fiscal 21, 2016. Were those kindergartens which are salaries, or just salaries in general for the district?
The accounting records aren't broken out, so that's really unclear. The offset went to teachers, so the understanding is that they were teachers that were providing the services.
Can we find that out?
I think, Pat, we can, we could take a look into that.
And then the only other thing I had the question on was, in technology, where we had a deficit at the, toward the end of the year, and we took encumbrance of another $152,000?
I can answer that.
With the existing deficit?
That, those were the, the purchase orders remaining from the H P lease. We would generate a purchase order and audit the equipment, and then when we submitted the invoices for payment to H P, we would then close the lease. At that point, there were still some open that we had, that hadn't been paid. They had some changeover personnel in that year, and the invoices hadn't been paid.
So it wasn't an encumbrance in addition to the deficit?
It really wasn't an encumbrance to the budget anyway, because it was not gonna be paid out of the budget.
It wasn't gonna be paid out of the budget.
Okay, thank you. I'm done.
Okay, we're good? Thank you, oh my gosh. Thank you. Nan and Carrie, please come back on the 18th and join us. Thank you all. Can I get a motion to adjourn, Jennifer, in a second?
Second.
Kathy, and all those in favor? Unanimous?
Everybody make sure you sign the warrants before you leave.